Christine, you're all set?
I'm good.
How we doing, Mike? All set? Okay, we're all set.
It's hard way.
Okay, sounds like we're all set. Anytime we have an executive meeting, it always takes five minutes to turn all the equipment on. We thought we were going to be on time. So, thank you all for showing up on time and thanks for your patience. Welcome to the July 1 Medfield Select Board Meeting. Glad to have you all here. It's probably one of the best air-conditioned options you might have had tonight, so probably it wasn't all that bad. A couple of points for the people that are here in the room. You should be aware that the meeting itself is being livestreamed on Medfield TV and is also being recorded, so you are being recorded. For that, if you are here and you want to talk, we're going to ask you to use either the microphone at the lectern or the one that's in the middle of the room. We'll ask you to identify yourself by name and the address before you start talking, so that people that are watching the videos can know who it was that was talking. For those who, there's some of you that have done this a lot, so you already know this. But for anybody who's new here, when you get up to the microphone, you start talking, you're going to think the microphone's not working. That's because the microphone isn't connected to an amplifier here in the room. It's actually intended to pick up the audio feed for Medfield TV. So it'll seem like it's a totally useless microphone, but it's actually a very important microphone for the people who tune in. So, even though it sounds like it's not working, it really is. The other thing, I guess the only other thing is we're starting today, we start our meetings with a moment to reflect on the members of our services that are serving in various parts of the world to help protect the country. So just take a moment to think about them. Thank you. Okay. The first item that we have on our agenda today is an appointment with Arrow Street for a presentation on the Medfield Municipal Building Capital Plan and Decarbonization Study Twenty-Year Master Plan.
Can I just ask to make sure everybody has their microphones on their laptops? We're just getting some feedback.
Yeah, mine's off.
All right. The iPad doesn't go to zero. Apple's not telling me why, so I'll log in in another way.
Are we good?
We're good. Take it away.
Thank you for that introduction of the very long name of this report. So, we're here. My name is Kiper Briski. I'm a Principal at Arrow Street and Director of Sustainability and Building Performance. So we're going to give a summary of the capital plan that we started last August and issued a report a couple of months ago, and so we're just going to go over the summary. So we have a few slides, if you want to go to the next slide.
Can I make one small request?
Yes.
Only because the sound of the fan.
Speak up.
Anybody in that side of the room's going to really be challenged to hear you, so sorry about that.
That's okay. So just going to quickly go through the purpose of the study, the scope of the study, what we looked at, the summary of the findings, and you know, there are kind of two parts to this study, as the title says. There's a capital planning, as well as we looked at electrification of systems, mechanical systems, and we looked at the energy and emissions reductions associated with electrification and improvements of the envelope for the buildings. So if we go to the next slide. So we looked at the 12 municipal buildings, includes the schools, as well as other municipal, the other, can't talk tonight, municipal facilities. We looked at their current conditions, and we were basically preparing a 20-year capital plan, looking at when pieces might need to be upgraded or repaired or replaced throughout that 20 years, or if they are not due for a replacement in that 20 years, that is also indicated. It's a pricing that's conceptual in today's dollars. It's not escalated over the 20 years. We visited all of the sites. We didn't do any, you know, demolition or destructive review of anything. It was based on visual observations, past reports, speaking with the town staff. We worked with Ben, I'm going to get your last name, Jackowicz. And also various custodians at different buildings as well, to collect feedback on how the buildings have been operating. The project consisted of architecture, which is Arrow Street, GGD Consulting, which are our MAP engineers, as well as structural engineering provided by RSE. Go to the next slide. And so, oops, that's okay. So based on our observations, we then prepared recommendations for repair, replacement, or upgrading of the systems, and we categorized them across five priorities. The first priority being, these are things that are in decline, or actually sometimes potentially not working, and that would be one to two years out. Priority two is things that are potentially critical, they really need to be looked at and prepared for replacement in the next five years, or three to five years. Priority three, these are repairs that are necessary but not critical yet, so that's your six to nine years. Priority four was recommended repairs, repairs that can happen basically in that 10 to 20 years, the second 10 years of the plan. And then 20 years plus is things that don't need to be replaced in the last 20 years, maybe they're brand new, or things that we consider by code as grandfathered, things that don't necessarily have to be upgraded and are in working order the way that they are, and not a, you know, a critical or hazardous condition. Let's go to the next slide. So this is just a summary. We're going to look at this building by building. This is a summary of all the buildings combined. The bar on the top is representing the cost based on priorities, so that purple is priority one, then the red is priority two, orange is priority three, and then four and five are the blue colors there. The bottom is representing, and that's the cost, as we call business as usual, or replacing HVAC and domestic hot water systems in kind with, if they're gas-fired systems, which most of them are, replacing them with the same gas-fired systems, you know, boilers with boilers, chillers with chillers, that in-kind replacement. And the bottom bar represents the electrification of the systems. So when the system would need to be replaced, depending on which priority that would fall in, it includes the cost of using a heat pump technology or electrified technology for that system. And so again, you can see the priority, purple is priority one, going to the right with priority five. The majority of the repairs are in the next five years, so priority one and two, that is where the most repairs are needing to be done. It primarily is around mechanical systems, so HVAC system replacements, envelope upgrade repairs, and roof replacements. That's the majority of where that work is, and associated components with it. So control systems with HVAC system equipment, things like that. On the next slide, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit hard to see that there, but that is building by building. So, I have it on my screen too. So the public safety building is the top one there, which has the least repairs. Department of Public Works, then Council on Aging, and the transfer station are the first four there that have the smallest amount of repairs in terms of dollar cost and items need to be repaired. The FAF building, which is number five from the top, that has the most significant repairs that are also immediate repairs, that we flagged in our report. The cost, because it's a small building, there's not a huge cost with that, but that did have primarily priority one repairs. The public library and the townhouse did not have too many sort of immediate repairs, but did have some repairs in the three to five-year range, again, on the lower cost, which is also somewhat proportional to the size of the buildings. And then the schools are the five project, or buildings at the bottom there, starting with the high school, then the middle school, Dale Street, Wheelock, and Memorial. You can see the majority of them, except for the high school, have the priority one or that purple color. That is due to the fact that most of them are in pretty immediate repair, or sorry, replacement needs for the HVAC equipment, as well as a lot of roof replacements and envelope upgrades, meaning new windows or repairing where there's water damage or infiltration happening in the envelopes. Where the high school, that system, the HVAC system, is really not immediate, it's priority two, so you can see why that's a, the red bar is the priority two for that, which is that three to five-year timeframe. Any questions before I move on to the next section?
If you went back to the five, the plan, sure, the chart that had the overall picture. When I was reading the plan, I was trying to understand how to take the information in the plan and understand it. So for instance, that, this is a good one, the 20, if you look at the 2026 to 2027, even the small bar, this is when the next two years, you have to spend $50 million on these things. And realistically, I don't see $25 million falling on us from somewhere in this upcoming fiscal year, in the next fiscal year, to do that. So I'm looking at saying, so what is this plan telling me, and how do I, is it like a rubber baseline, that you just say, well, whatever it is, just pull the rubber band more, and you know, the timeframe will stretch, and this is the right sequence, it's just get to, you know, get to it when you can get to it? That's one question. The second question is, the warrant committee's been talking a lot about $50 million for school roofs for at least this year. And so the tricky part for me was to try to map this study and the financial demands that are coming in in this plan onto the other things that I hear about what we need to do. And I'm trying to say, is this, I don't think this is totally new, but I can't tell if it's totally consistent either. So it's like when, you know, if the warrant committee says $50 million for school roofs, is that the same as the $50 million you have here?
Yes.
Okay, so that's helpful to me. So I'm not, I don't have to double everything.
Right.
They're big numbers anyway. Okay.
So for the first question, you know, we're looking at, the prioritization is looking at each building individually, right? So there's basically five buildings that need new HVAC systems, and that's pretty much complete soup to nuts on those systems right now, right? But they probably also needed those new systems for, you know, five to 10 years potentially, right? And so in terms of prioritizing within that priority, which one to come first, some of that has to, would have to be in conversation with the facilities maintenance staff, right? Like what can you, what, which building could you sort of limp along longer, which one can have sort of some minor repairs to be able to, and then also looking at more holistically, you know, is there a prioritization of the buildings for other reasons across the town? We didn't look at any kind of programmatic review of the buildings, right? We're just looking at the conditions assessment, so there could be other priorities the town might have.
Keeping the buildings able to do what the buildings currently are able to do is the way to think about that.
Right.
Then I have one more question on the slide that had by schools. And again, this is a practical question of how I should think about this plan, how we should use it. FAF, as you know, the FAF building is closed. It's literally, nobody's ever going to do anything. So we're carrying some burdens here for buildings that, and I would say probably you could even look at the Dale Street School, which is another big one, which is somewhere here, I would assume in the next few years, we're going to have a new school. And I'm trying to think, would this plan be better by acknowledging that those two things were not, you know, it would take a lot of the numbers away on something that we clearly are not going to.
Right, you could take about probably 22 million of this out between those two. They were part of the study, and that's why they're in there, and you know, our assessment and our memo on the FAF building, which was, came out of our assessment and our site visits and review of the building, and so it was part of the study.
Okay, so the way I should understand this plan is that they were buildings that were included in the study. You did the study based on effectively an assumption that these buildings would be the buildings.
Right.
It would be up for us to.
Right, you could, but you can, but you could consider, if you looked at the town line, if you took, I think it's about 20, I had to look that number exactly, about 22 million between those two buildings.
Okay.
That are in the study, for all, for all priorities across those buildings.
And can you just mention which are the five that need HVACs? Is it the schools?
So the four, well, the four schools and the FAF building, so we.
Okay, so it's basically the schools then?
Can, you know, counting the FAF building, it would be four.
So what dawned on me when I thought about that was that that would get us air conditioning in schools, wouldn't it?
Yes, heat pump technology has heating and cooling.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I like your, the plan, I mean, it seems like it's really well done. I just wish you included a solution for the money.
We do talk about some incentives, but not, not $150 million of incentives, but, so if you want to page eight, or actually, no, this one, we didn't talk about this one yet. So this is just the same as the previous slide, adding, replacing the business as usual fossil fuel systems with the electrified systems. So this is a total cost for each building with electrified systems versus gas-fired systems. And then the next one is a timeline for the major upgrades. So the major upgrades being envelope and HVAC systems. And so the green are the buildings that need HVAC and envelope upgrades. The light blue is the ones that need envelope upgrades, and HVAC is the dark blue. And for reference, because I really, you can't reference that without looking at the whole report, buildings one and two are the public safety building, the Department of Public Works, which are in priority one. Four, that's not right.
That's Memorial School.
Yeah, can you, I'm like, I need the key. The green, number one, is Memorial School, two is the Wheelock School. These are the priority ones that I'm reading through. Four, the blue four on there for envelope is the Blake Middle School. Six is the townhouse. Seven is the public library. And eight is the FAF building. So those were the priority one HVAC and envelope items. Priority two.
Can I stop you just one other point on that? For those HVAC and envelope, in the determination of HVAC, is that because the current HVAC is on the verge of collapsing, or is it that the HVAC we have is not electrified HVAC?
So because it's, I wouldn't say on the verge of collapsing, but it's at the end of, most of them are past the end of life, so they're on the, they're in sort of constant repair, and to be able to keep them running. So they're beyond their useful life, some of them significantly.
So this is saying all but two of our buildings have HVAC systems, are on the verge of collapse? The only two that aren't are 11 and 12, which is.
Yes, the only ones that are not were the transfer station, the council on aging, public works, and public safety. And just, the middle school is a little bit split between. Um, and just, uh, the middle school is a little bit split between priority one and two. That's why you see it kind of come up twice. Am I saying the right number? No, yeah, the middle school. Um, just because some parts of the HVAC need to be replaced now and some of them have a little bit longer, like five years, um, versus two years.
So one of the things that I've heard from, uh, the energy committee people like Jim Redden, who know a lot, is that the current state of the technology for electrification doesn't warrant putting, warrant putting in an electric, uh, heating system in a school, that you need to put in a high efficiency gas boiler at this point. Is that where we stand?
Um, I mean, my, our experience, we just, we happen to design a lot of.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
We, we happen to design a lot of K-12 schools. Um, we haven't put a gas boiler in a school since probably twenty eighteen, so they're all electrified with a combination of air source and ground source heat pumps.
It's a combination?
So some of them have ground source heat pumps, some of them have air source heat pumps.
Okay, but no.
Is that for new construction?
For new construction and renovations. We have a couple of renovations.
At all since two thousand and eighteen?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's pretty common. If you, if you looked at the MSBA and the, the schools that MSBA is, um, also funding, the majority of their schools are also electrified.
Jim probably is talking about replacing a system in an existing school rather than new construction, I would think.
Well, I think that, that we're saying here that it is replacements that are.
Yeah, we definitely see a lot of renovations. Um, there are some ways where you can reuse components of your infrastructure, of your existing system. Um, so you can replace, if you have unit ventilators, there's actually heat pump systems that you can do, um, that are literally in physically the same space. So it's not like a completely new infrastructure that you can do.
Try to pay better attention in energy committee meetings from going forward.
I got a question here. It, it has to do with the library, because the library is number seven, uh, which shows that the H, the envelope and HVAC have to be done in the two years. About ten years ago, and I, I could, I could be wrong, so that's why I'm trying to tap your memory here. The library at one point was a relatively new, uh, building. And something like ten years ago, like less than fifteen years after the, the new HVAC systems were put in, they had to be replaced. And now we're saying they're on the verge, or this is saying that we're on the verge of needing to replace them again. And it seems like it was a pretty short period of time.
Yeah, so with the, the schools are a little bit, do you want to answer that different than? Um, well, Ben's coming up. So the, the library is not a full replacement like the schools are. Um, so the library does have some newer, um, packaged units. There was two new units and it said, there were six more that were planned for replacement. Um, so this is just some additional HVAC you were trying to pull up exactly what it is.
Yeah, go ahead now. That's a much smaller number than some of the other places.
Yes.
Um, Ben Jacko's with the facilities department. Um, to just elaborate, when they started, when we first hired Arrow Street, there were old units on the library and then as part of a Green Communities grant, they replaced the six oldest ones with the, um, heat pump with natural gas backup.
Okay.
So a lot of those, uh, rooftop units are new.
Okay, so that's green, but it doesn't mean it's necessarily expensive. Got it?
Correct.
Relatively, relatively speaking, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So then we're going to, um, look at the energy and reduction assessment that we did as part of the report. So here we're looking at, um, the energy reduction. This is looking specifically at the envelope upgrades that were recommended as well as the electrified, electrified systems, so it doesn't include, the projected here is the electrified systems. Um, so on the left, um, you can see the current energy use, the darkest blue is fossil fuel use and the lighter blue is electrified or electricity use right now. Um, and then the projected use, um, incorporating those envelope upgrades and the electrified, um, HVAC and hot water systems resulted in a thirty-six percent reduction. Um, this is what we call a benchmarking study, so we didn't do detail energy modeling for every building. Um, we set benchmarks based on similar types of, um, buildings and similar types of projects in order to achieve that number. You can also see, um, the dashed, uh, arrow on top that says PV offset. Um, so as part of the study, we looked at the existing, um, as well as some undergoing like current projects for PV, um, on buildings or canopies in the town. And we also looked at possibilities for additional rooftop PV. Um, so you can see the offset, um, of the PV, um, goes further because we proposed some additional, um, photovoltaic, um, solar panels. And so the offset was about, um, one-third of the electric use that we project in the future.
So if I can understand the PV offset, that's if we opt to build solar photovoltaic on the building?
Additional solar.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next slide is just looking, um, how that breaks down per building. Um, so those colors are the same dark as the existing light blue, um, is the projected, um, for each building. Um, and so you can see the, this more significant ones are at the schools, um, because those need the most significant HVAC replacements. And so you'd be able to, um, take advantage of lower energy, um, systems, um, with the heat pump systems. And on the next slide is the emissions associated, um, uh, greenhouse gas, gas emissions related to those energy reductions. Um, so on the left is the existing, on the right, um, sorry. On the left is the projected emissions, um, without any PV considered. Um, so it's about forty-four percent reduction in emissions. And then if you account for your current, um, solar PV as well as the, um, some small additional PV that we assessed, um, you could change, um, or increase that reduction from forty-four to fifty-six percent. Um, we didn't explore extensive new solar. We didn't look at any site solar anywhere. We just looked at rooftops that don't currently have them and that could have them. We did not include, um, buildings like the library and the town hall and that. So there was only a small amount of additional rooftop PV that we identified. And then the last slide is looking at the energy costs, um, with those new systems. Uh, the dark bar is existing, the light bars are projected, um, both projected, um, with and without the PV, um, to offset the cost there. And as you might be familiar, the cost of electricity, um, utility electricity is more expensive than the cost of gas. And so while, um, we were seeing a thirty-six percent reduction in energy, um, use, uh, the actual cost does increase because of the cost of electricity. That of course can be reduced through PV, um, which you, why you can see the difference in the two light bars with some additional PV. Um, you also could consider additional PV, um, because now the buildings would be, you know, fully electrified in this scenario and therefore the renewable energy could provide the energy, um, for those buildings. And so, um, you could reduce that cost further by either, um, procuring onsite more additional PV in town or through other, um, community or, or power purchase agreement solar that would be less than the utility cost.
Um, so that leads to another question I have for you. And in prioritization here, I, I was trying to figure out if, not even how, but just if economic considerations fed into the priorities or not. And the point you just made there about, well, electric rates are higher than natural gas right now. So actually you'll reduce your energy usage, but your costs are going to go up. Did that.
Through procuring, through the utility.
You were doing a technical analysis of the priorities as opposed to an economic analysis of priorities. Would that be fair if we say that?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
Yep.
Can I ask you one other question?
Yep, can ask many questions you have.
Well, this is, this is sort of different, but I, because I, I tried to do the economic analysis on, and get a interesting range of costs for, for emissions reductions. There was a, there's a table on there somewhere that has existing energy use without PV.
Mm-hmm.
But then there was also existing energy use with PV.
Right.
And I couldn't figure out how we could have two different levels of existing energy use. Either what you're saying is some of our buildings have PV and therefore that's our actual energy use, but it includes probably a net production of PV. And I didn't know how to look at those two numbers because it's two different numbers for existing energy use.
So for the existing energy use, the one that was without PV is, that is your energy load. So that is what the systems in the building, the lights, HVAC, plug loads, outlets, all of that, that's the energy load that it's drawing without any of that, any of the energy coming from the renewables. But then if you, um, take your existing renewables and you, um, take that off, that's the number that's at existing with PV factored in.
Okay, so the emissions reduction calculations then, are they based on existing use without PV or with PV?
Um, let's see.
You can see where I'm asking the question, because if we really.
You're asking on.
We've already reduced some of the emissions.
Right, so slide eleven, that's what you're asking, right?
I'm impressed that you know out of all these pages we've got.
But does that answer your question?
So. The, you're asking if the slide on the left there, the forty-four percent reduction in emissions, what is that based on? That is based on looking at, if you go to the previous slide. Oops, sorry, two slides.
Sorry.
That one. That is based on the projected energy use versus the current energy use, um, both without PV factored in. So both the existing use without PV factored in and the projected use without PV factored in, just the emissions associated with both of those. That's that, um, forty-four percent reduction in emissions. And then when we factored the PV in, we factored it in on both the existing side and the additional PV, um, that we proposed with the projected.
And for the projected, what date is that? Projected at what point in time?
That's a good question. So the energy use would be any point in time, right? So that's just your energy use. If you implement these, um, upgrades, the envelope and HVAC, what your energy should be, and then the emissions factor.
Assuming a static load is what you're saying. It's not a, there's no projection about the demand changing.
Right. Um, and the emissions factor, we used once.
So on, on the chart with the bars that were vertical, it said we're paying seven hundred thousand a year for energy now and it's going to go up to nine hundred thousand projected.
Uh, yes, I believe that was roughly this.
Yeah, about.
And we use the twenty thirty-five emissions factors, just, twenty thirty-five was the number that we used. So that's not current emissions. If you looked at current emissions, the reductions would look much higher because the grid is dirtier today than it is in the future. Um, but twenty thirty-five is a pretty standard, um, emissions number that we look at because it's halfway between now and twenty fifty where the state is, you know, essentially supposed to be a hundred percent renewable.
So is that the projected, then, twenty thirty-five is the projected?
It's halfway between now and twen- essentially halfway between now and twenty fifty.
When you say projected, that's the number on twenty thirty-five?
For emissions factors.
Okay, thank you.
The term dirtier grid means we're using more fossil fuels.
To generate the electricity.
It's an inefficient grid and we're getting better technology or something like that.
Correct.
It's literally just the growth.
Using natural, um, gas, um, or other dirty coal, um, mixes versus all renewable mixes.
Thanks.
So those are all my slides.
I have a quick question. Looking at, uh, page one fifteen, whether you have the potential PV generation areas.
Mm-hmm.
Like today, if anyone in town drives by the Memorial School parking lot, that's going to be solar canopies, yes? And then is it down the road, we'd put them on the roof? Is that the, the plan?
Right, the roof right now, yeah.
So it's parking lot right now, for, like literally being done as we speak, and then down the road, it would be the roof? And then the same with, uh, we're not doing canopies, WeLok parking lot, but we would put them on the roof. Middle school, did that get held up being put on the roof?
I don't know where they are in the project state.
Okay.
And when?
Do we? Okay.
Yep.
A small area.
Ben, did any of them get held up?
How do you mean?
In terms of, uh, solar projects that we thought were going to go forward that got held up either by school committee or by, uh.
The, I believe, the high school.
Ben, Ben, could you just use the microphone please? Because then the people at home that are so interested come here.
Ben Jacko's with the Medfield Facilities Department. Um, so there is a small portion of the roof at Blake that has solar, that's live.
Okay.
Uh, at the high school, there was talk of putting a canopy similar to what they're putting in at Memorial.
Yep.
I believe, and I don't want to speak for the school department, but I believe that there's a temporary hold on that.
Okay.
As far as I know.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, as far as planned, uh, I know there's a few sites that they were looking at, but, um, the Memorial parking lot, um, should be completed hopefully before school, but, uh, working on that now.
Um, and we did include.
Scale back from, like in the last two years, I thought the high school made, it was a modest reduction in the number of panels. And I forget whether it had to do with roof condition. It wasn't a big deal, but it was like two years ago, I think it scaled back on the roof as well.
So the issues with the, the roof mounted units is that the, the building has to be strong enough to support them. And then you don't want to put it on a bad roof that you're going to pull off in five years and replace, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Timing's important. So we need the fifty million for the new roofs.
Yeah, so we only had, uh, five potential buildings, um, and we did include the potential, um, array that was being planted, the high school that is included in the, the future generation that's in the report.
Okay.
Um, and then we included the, um, canopy that was, I think, being installed now, or maybe it's now installed.
Memorial is in progress.
In progress. We included that on the existing side in the report.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, okay.
And I thought I saw something about the, the high school parking lot, that there were issues underneath the pavement that caused it to stop the canopies there, but I don't, I wasn't following that.
This is a, this is a cop, so thank you first. This is, this is helpful as a cop. I spent a lot of time on the plan and the biggest challenge I had was to say, okay, I think I understand most of the data that I'm looking at, but I'm not sure I, I really know how I should think about it in terms of what the town should do from a strategy. So it's not a technical comment, it's a, call it business management, whatever you want to call it, or financial management issue. One of the things I did was, I did a spreadsheet, uh, where I took it, and I did it by, by, uh, facility. And what I did was, I liked the two things. One was cost impact. Uh, both operating cost and then the capital cost. And what I realized is that a lot of these projects, the, the actual cost impact for the gain that it's made, it swings all over the place. There's, there are some, the operating impact, uh, per unit of emissions, and I did by unit, emissions reduction. So that's what I was, figured, well, you might want to pick the projects that are going to have the biggest impact on emissions for your dollars and that would be another way of prioritizing it. And I, I had, for example, the operating cost impact per unit of mission, uh, emissions reduction, it ranged from fourteen hun- that, one of the most expensive ones would be the Council on Aging. It'd be a thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars per unit of mission adducted. And I think the unit is millions of tons, so it's, uh, which, which is interesting. Now, on the other hand, there were some, the cheapest was, uh, the Medfield Townhouse was thirty-eight dollars, impact on the operating cost for, it, it, this is just a ratio, so it's not, doesn't mean that there's a lot of emissions reductions. It's just the cost was so low, that was down. And then I also looked at the capital investment cost. That was scarier. Uh, because fortunately, fortunately the FAF building's off the list. That was three hundred sixty-three thousand dollars per unit of emissions reduction. The most expensive was the Council on Aging again, uh, and one of the cheapest ones was the high school. And it was just, for me, it was an interesting way to look at it. If, if emissions reduction is important, then how much are we spending to reduce the emissions? And what would your priorities be if that was the issue? Uh, and that was a, kind of an interesting picture. It kind of pointed me in the direction, some of the biggest projects, in some cases were some of the biggest impacts in terms of, from an environmental standpoint.
Right.
Just thought that was interesting.
Right. Which is based on the, the size, there's, you know, obviously economy of scale for repairs and replacement costs. Um, but then you also, that's your highest utility cost, so the lower you can, um, make, or sorry, the biggest energy user. And so you get the biggest energy reduction and emissions reduction.
Pete, anything?
Um, so you're, you're finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the, the biggest takeaway for me from this was the, I guess it's the, oh my god reaction at the, at the dollar figures. Um, I mean, we've got the priority one and priority two, which is the next five years. And you've listed a hundred million there that we're supposed to be, we need to spend quickly in the next five years to get our building envelopes and systems in the proper condition. Um, and if you take the FAF and the, and the, and the Dale Street out of that, you save not that much. And if you take the FAF and the Dale Street out of that, you save not that much, unfortunately, twenty-five. So, but, you know, still, we've got, we've got a massive dollar problem, and it's because we haven't been spending enough money on our schools and our other town buildings as we've gone along. One of my pleasant reactions to this was to see that the Public Safety Building, the Town Garage, and the Council on Aging all have pretty low needs compared to the other buildings. In general, I guess my reaction was that when I saw that buildings needed roofs, I mean, the roofs are astronomically expensive, but it doesn't behoove us to put our heads in the sand and not put new roofs on and have leaks. And I mean, we had a leak on the basketball court at the high school within the last several years, so that we, it, in the long run, it, we need to do the maintenance, we need to spend the money. And I had sort of a reaction to this, the same as I had with the OPEB when all of a sudden we discovered that we owed forty-five million dollars in monies to retirees for healthcare and for pensions that we hadn't funded. And that basically what we had done was, we had not paid, all the residents that were here when those people were working for the town didn't pay in enough taxes to cover what those people are going to be owed in their retirement. And I had the same reaction here. People in town haven't been paying their fair share to keep these buildings up for years, and now we current residents are facing this massive bill for all this deferred maintenance. And so that, and what I was saying to Chris and Brittany earlier today was that we need to have a more active plan to keep the buildings in good shape and to, it doesn't make sense for us to let buildings leak and then have extra cost. I was especially concerned because I saw a reference to mold in the library from leaks, but Chris told me that I don't remember what the solution was or the issue was, but it, it, it didn't, I wasn't as upset when I first read about the mold, because that sounds like
And we didn't say mold, we just said whenever you have significant leaking, you should always just do a test for that.
Yeah, yeah. But if you get the mold, then the remediation is expensive, so that you want to avoid those situations. You want to keep the envelopes good. So it's, I mean, it's very bad news. My reaction, my other reaction was that we need to have a very active capital planning committee going forward, that they, I think they're the proper place to plan our spending. And then we've got this issue of where do we come up with a hundred million dollars to fix our buildings?
So I just want to note, like, I do appreciate this, the report, if anyone watching this, anyone watching the recording down the road, this packet, our info packet for tonight contains this report, and it's incredibly informative. You know, you're the messenger, right? It's like, unfortunately, you get to come with this big, big, big bill that we, as residents of this town, it's facing us. And there's going to be a lot of hard decisions made because you just can't spend that money overnight without it coming from the pockets of the people. And that's just not reality. So there's going to be a lot of hard decisions coming forward. You know, we've got the school project that's right in front of us, we've got a FAF center that is condemned, and then we still have all these roofs, and I don't disagree with what Pete's saying. You can try to turn, turn your head or put it in the sand, but water's going to seep through. And once water starts to seep through, and you have our traditional New England winters, that freezing water can do a ton of damage. But I will say, just again to the residents, it's a incredibly informative packet. It covers all the buildings, and it does explain everything that you just went through here tonight in more detail. And then I would welcome any feedback, you know, emails, phone calls, face-to-face. Come and share your thoughts and any, if they miss anything, which I kind of doubt because it's very thorough. But I do thank you very much, nicely done.
Am I right that you were involved in the prior Dale Street School project, Arrow Street?
We were, yes.
Yes, thank you for that.
I got to check a lot of Pete's comment about the capital, because as he was saying that, I was looking at Ben saying, no, I actually think Ben's the one that better, better know what our, what our building maintenance are. The capital budgeting committee might be good, but I'm not sure they're quite as good at sizing up what needs to be done. The, first, thanks for the report. I did spend a lot of time with it, I have all kinds of comments that I put in for myself here. And what most of my comments all had to do was trying to figure out my own insights around this cost issue. You know, there's probably nothing wrong with the estimates that you have, or for the, for the degree of precision and the approach you took. For sure, it gives us the right kind of ballpark of what we're talking about. My sense, and this is me just talking, you can correct me, but my, in trying to figure out what to do about something like this, when you have numbers that by far are too big to actually take, like, this is not actually a plan. I mean, it's what you put together for what should happen, so it's a plan in that sense, it's not our plan.
Right, it's not a
Because we aren't going to be able
It's not an action plan, it's a capital plan of all the capital needs, right?
But it does lay out a benchmark, and what I was trying to do, spent a lot of time trying to understand how to understand the data, so I knew what to think about. And to Pete's point, we, there are a lot of things that have gone on where long-term financial obligations across a range of things have never been taken into account fully in our society in general. And now we're finally in a lot of different areas of doing that. When I think about that, it's actually not a hundred twenty million number, it's actually the hundred eighty million number if you put in all the electrification to it as well. That's really, in a, in a sense at least, that's the picture you painted was that somewhere between now and twenty forty-five, so twenty years. We, if we were doing everything that you're suggesting we should do, that would be a hundred eighty million dollars that we'd be putting in over a twenty-year period. So that's, what, nine million dollars a year? And we may be putting in ten percent of that, huh? It's, well.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, that, yeah, no, yeah, but
Make sure you recognize that statement.
Taxes are going, I'm trying to, affordability, taxes are going up, maybe, as the economy booms, we're all going to be better off.
But what I, what I'm getting at is, when I think about this one, I'm thinking there's one piece that, if you tell me I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. One piece of this is called the traditional view of how to keep a building going. And that's some portion of that maintenance cost is kind of keeping a building going in all the things that we think about about buildings. Certainly, leaky roofs is a piece of that. But there's another piece that's built in here because of the decarbonization plan that also is a somewhat proactive, I think, is a somewhat proactive thought process that says, you know, maybe in the life cycle, if I look at the life cycle view strictly, I'm going to be able to justify putting money into some kinds of new technologies. And those technologies are also contributing to the projected costs, things like envelope changes to accommodate. And I, I'm not saying that's the wrong thing to do, but I'm sensitive in trying to say, so what's the prudent, what's the responsible approach for a town to think, to take, to spend the right kind of money that you should spend? Recognize you have some pressures, so the people are going to spend more money on this stuff than they want to. But what's the, how do you find the responsible path? And it's like, it's the difference between making sure you keep all the routine maintenance that we would have thought thirty years ago was important, and then making some form of a prudent choice about how, to what extent do you just use straight life cycle cost analysis to make your decisions? Because it's very hard for any of us to do that. None of us have enough money in the bank account to be a hundred percent focused on life cycle costs in everything that we buy. Some things, I just don't have the money to buy that new car, even though I know the life cycle would be better off. So it's just me trying to think about how to take the information you provide, what to, how to think about it in a way that puts it into an action plan that we don't have yet.
Sure.
But I appreciate the information.
Yeah, I mean, I would say most, you're not alone. Many towns are doing these exact same reports. And, you know, oftentimes, they have one that's ten years old or fifteen years old, but their maintenance was deferred and never, things didn't happen with their last report. And so we're seeing much more action around this. And so however that pans out for Medfield, whether it's looking at, you know, a building committee or a capital planning committee, or whatever that group is, with the people who are also the facility managers that know the conditions of the buildings, to assess this a little bit more and to be able to assess, like, you know, and there's lots of factors, right? Either just looking at the conditions of the equipment and the systems, that's one thing, but also is the impact, like you said, is it emissions impact? Is it five hundred people are going to be impacted as occupants in this condition? There's, I don't know, thirty occupants are going to be impacted by this condition. So there's lots of different things you can factor into that. But, you know, that would be our recommendation, is to create this capital plan into an action plan. And really, it's about planning it out, right? So that you know what those tasks are, where they're coming. And so you're prepared as well when systems do just completely die and fail, and they can't be revived, if you will, that you're not then going out and just replacing in kind with, say, a gas boiler, because that's, we need it tomorrow, and that's our option. So it's being able to be prepared to make a more informed decision.
Where you likely see many more towns than we do. In terms of how towns solve this issue, I know that Wellesley decided to solve their OPEB issue by borrowing all the money, they bonded it, and then they paid the bond every year. Is, are any towns doing that with this type of?
That is definitely not my area of expertise, I'm not sure. They're the new school project, but not, so they're, yeah, they're not bonding, they're acting as a town where we did a similar study, and they're doing their first project in that study, which is electrifying their town hall, but.
I guess in a nutshell, what we can have is another FAF center, right? And we can't, we can't ignore certain things that we get ourselves in predicament where one day you can't walk into a FAF center. We have to make it, we have to be able to walk into these buildings.
Get a lot of years out of that FAF center.
Yeah, I know, that's just it, right?
And they're the ones that made us stop using it. They sent us that memo that said it was unsafe.
We have us here. Here no evil.
Do you want to field any questions?
Yeah, are there any, are there any questions from the?
Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. I'm just hoping that somebody can provide a little bit of a refresher as to why the wastewater treatment plant wasn't part of this. I remember it was, it was mentioned at a past meeting, but I couldn't remember what it was.
They have their own study done, separate from this.
Okay. Okay, great, all right, thanks.
And the water treatment, or the water, yeah, the water treatment plant isn't part of this either, is it?
Not the brand-new one, no.
Yeah.
Hi, Mike Quinlan, One Stewart Street, Chairman of the Permanent Planning and Building Committee. I have a lot to say on this topic, as you would expect. I'm not going to go into all of it this evening, because we'll be here way beyond your bedtime, I promise you. That said, I hope this does serve as a wake-up call. Yes, you're absolutely right, there's no way we could absolutely tackle all of this all at once. But we got to start somewhere, and we got to start tackling it as opposed to kicking it down the road. We've been kicking it down the road for years, and that's led to our buildings literally falling apart, literally. So we've got to do something. So I hope this group, charged with leading this town, uses this as a wake-up call to start that process. I think you're, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful here, but I think you're focused on the wrong things with decarbonization and electrification right now. We got to stabilize our buildings, we got to stop them from leaking. The biggest thing that destroys buildings is water over time. So roofs, envelope, that stuff has to be a priority for a lot of these buildings, which are failing regularly, and we're having to repair on an emergency basis, which is a waste of money. We're putting a Band-Aid on a gushing wound here. So I hope this serves as a wake-up call. I will say, you know, enjoy Arrow Street and what they've done, and, but the one thing that I want to make sure is clear here, these are today's dollars, they're not escalated. So some of that work that may be ten years out is not going to cost what it says in there, it's going to be, it's going to be more at that time. We do have our municipal capital stabilization fund, which is, by my judgment, insufficient significantly. And every year gets more insufficient, because we're only allowed to raise it two and a half percent a year, and inflation is four to six percent when it's stable. So every year, we buy less and less and less with that. In twenty twenty-one alone, there was nine percent inflation, and we had two and a half percent inflation on our capital stabilization fund. That's not sustainable.
Mike, do you have an opinion as to what that number should be every year?
If you ask me, I think right, the limit which started with a million a year should be doubled, so we should be putting at least two million a year into that fund. But given the situation that Arrow Street is showing us right now, it could potentially even be more. But I know there's all sorts of legal mumbo jumbo around that. But I can tell you that because of Massachusetts law, the only way to increase it beyond two and a half percent is an override. So that creates all sorts of, all sorts of issues alone. The fact is, we haven't invested in our facilities. I've been on the building committee for fourteen years. This has been a topic that we've been discussing every time we, that we've met, basically, in some form or fashion. The FAF center was identified for replacement in a two thousand thirteen study that we did with the Public Safety Building. So that's now twelve years behind us, and we did nothing about it. So my words to you tonight are to use this as a wake-up call, figure out what the plan is, figure out how you want to attack it, but do something.
Mike, can I ask you, I'm just, this is a question for both of you. I agree with you about the, I guess I would call it the core maintenance as opposed to the added things of decarbonization. But you brought, and I think the roofs, if we don't have a fifty billion dollar roof replacement nut to crack on the radar screen, that's about the only thing I'm hearing about outside of the school. So I think we, to the extent you're making a point about roofs, I think that's in the works. You mentioned envelopes, though. And I'm curious whether the definition of envelope repair that you're talking about is the same as the envelope repair.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is. It's about masonry, repointing of masonry.
Windows, sealants.
You know, sealants, windows, window replacements if necessary. All, doors and, doors and windows and facade, that's what envelope is.
What I'm getting at is, is that, I want to start fighting between the two of yous.
No.
No, if you're going to ask me if I agree with that, the answer is
Well, I'm saying, is that something that's just the Band-Aids that are being put on to fix the envelope before you actually fix the envelope when you get to the electrification and decarbonization? Or is that a good thing to do, and that'll be compatible with what envelopes will be?
The envelope repairs in here are not repairing, like, we have a leak right here, we're fixing that leak. That's, that's maintenance, this is like holistic repair. So it's replacing all the windows, replacing all the sealant, repointing the whole building, redoing all the flashing. So it's, it's a comprehensive repair of the existing facade.
So what I'm getting at is
Depending on what needs to be done.
There's another decision that's going to be made when you do that. Maybe the window repairs, the way Mike's talking about it, is twenty-five percent of the cost of a replacement of windows. But if you're going to replace the windows, and you're going to replace the windows in five years, then whether it's worth putting the twenty-five percent in now versus living with it, I'm thinking aloud, is all I'm doing right now, is trying to say, I get, I get what you're saying.
And these are all questions that need, that need answers, and we need to evaluate all the buildings in terms of what is appropriate.
Right.
Like, it doesn't make sense to sink money into FAF, we've talked about that. But, you know, we still need to find a solution for Parks and Rec. So everything has implications, and whatever decision is made is going to have implications. But we got to take that first step, we got to start moving down the road. And, you know, I understand the schools are focused on roofs, and as they should be, that's the first line of defense for keeping buildings stable, is keeping water out, keeping snow out. So, you know, I'm supportive of the school's efforts there, because I know some of them in particular are really bad, including Blake, in particular, so.
No, Mike, I think what you're saying is spot-on, and, you know, I, it is the three of us that are here to lead the town, but we can't speak for every resident.
I'm sure.
So the challenge we're going to have is, you know, we have the next topic on our agenda that some people are a hundred percent behind, and other people are like, no, don't do it. And the only reason I'll speak for myself is why I'm trying to look at ways to draw revenue, to do exactly what you're saying. We can't continue to push the can down the road because the water's coming, we know it's going to rain, we know it's going to get cold, we know it's going to get extremely hot. So the ramifications of that are, we're going to have another FAF center, whether it be Dale, whether it be Wheelock, whether it be, that's going to happen again, and it's not just going to impact the kids that are there for Parks and Rec, it's going to impact the, you know, an entire grade or two grades. But I think that, you know, what you're saying needs to be heard by every resident in this town. Because if you're paying taxes, that's how the stuff gets paid. It doesn't grow on trees, and we, you know, we can't go to our neighbors and say, can you send some of your tax dollars our way? We've tried to figure it out, and that's why some of the conversations we have up here get contentious, because residents don't want us to do certain things, but in the same breath, they also want to be able to make sure they have a school to send their kids to. So it's a, it's a, they're not, some of these conversations aren't fun, but the reality is what you're saying.
They're not fun, but they have to be had, and they have to be had more than they are currently. And so the reason I look at you three is you're the executive body in this.
Hundred percent.
And I'm not saying you're going to solve every problem, and you're certainly not going to do it alone. But part of your job is to communicate these huge problems that are coming down the road so that residents understand them
Yep.
And, you know, hopefully support avoiding the tidal wave that's coming, so that it's, you know, more bearable. You know, Kate is laying out the problems that were created decades ago, and, you know, but they're not going away.
Nope.
And, you know, baby boom generation led to the state putting up schools left and right in the sixties, fifty, sixties, and seventies. And now they're all coming due, right? They're all reaching their fifty-six year, fifty, sixty life They're all reaching their 56 year, 50, 60 life year lifespan and they're all starting to come down across the, across the state. Which is why we're building so much right now in K-12. We have multiple schools that are of the same era. We could talk about Dale all we want, but we don't have Dale just to do, Wheelock won't be far behind, Memorial is going to need attention and even Blake's going to need attention. So I know it's, it's painful and trust me, it just got a lot more painful. I fully estimate that the Dale Street School Project, if it proceeds, is at least 50% more expensive than it was four years ago. I, I live this every day.
120 million then?
More than that.
Oh, God, okay.
I just estimated a school for the city of Marlboro at 170 million. Now granted, it's a larger enrollment than Dale would be. So I don't want to, you know, nail down a number because there's so many decisions that affect that number, but I can tell you that, you know, costs have increased 50% in school construction since, since the vote failed. So it hurts, I get it, the town's not going to like it, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be having these conversations.
Oh, no.
I think, Mike, the, the issue about the conversation though is what is the conversation you're having? Because I think you can, you can talk about 180 million dollars here, you could talk about 100, whatever. You pick the number for the cost of a new Dale Street school based on your experience. You can talk about $50 million in roofs and you're saying that's not even everything that's there. And then you can also talk about the fact that this town, just because of our debt being as low as it's gone down because we haven't done anything in a bit, has, has at least gone above the 20th most expensive town for homeowners. But as soon as the Dale Street project comes in, my guess is we're back at 13 or 14 in the state. So when you sit there and say, well, that's number 13th, 14th most expensive town for taxes in the state. And oh, by the way, we got another 180 million dollars for you that you have to, the, the conversation cannot be so buckle up. Because there will be some people who will.
That's not what I said, Gus.
No, 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 I know, but Mike, well, you didn't comment either way. My comment is that it's, the issue is, and, and the reason I bring it up is because the issue is an affordability issue. And where I see the crunch coming is scope of services of the town. I don't know how you do everything that we're doing in the town. Not that we do, as a town, we don't do some of the incredible things that you do in other towns who are paying a lot of money, but also have a 30% commercial tax base so they can pull it off. And that, so the, the, the part of the crunch that scares me is on the financial side. What is that conversation you have? You tell people there's this and there's this and there's this and then what do you tell them? Because.
I think you ask them, I think you ask them, if this was your house and your roof was leaking all the time and it, and your windows were failing, what would you do? Would you fix it? Or would you say, I'll wait for the, I'm just going to sell it, I'm going to sell the house, the next buyer will fix that problem?
But what does that mean for them as taxpayers in the town? What, I, I understand what you're saying and you're making a good point. What is the message that's sending to them as taxpayers around spending money and paying taxes?
The, the message is we can either, A, spend them and stabilize our buildings and have good schools that are, you know, not raining on children and that we can have a town hall that doesn't have the roof flying off it, you know. And, or, and our property values will continue to skyrocket like everybody loves, but they don't love to pay the taxes on it.
But they won't, the taxes go up and all of a sudden this is not the attractive place to move to, that's the problem.
Well, I can, I can assure you the property taxes will go, the property values will go down if we continue to neglect our buildings like this.
Yeah, to catch 20 too.
Who's, 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 there's, every town around us is building schools and we've talked about this in the past. If you don't think that people who are young, with younger families are looking at which towns, you know, have, you know, schools that have been upgraded, that are brought to current standards when they're making their selection and that's influencing where they're shopping, it's happening. It may not be happening drastically because I know our values are still going up drastically. And again, I don't want to bog down this discussion and that.
And, and I'm a.
The long and the short, the long and the short of it, I, I think I relayed my message is that, and I, I don't know the answer, I don't have all the answers. But, you know, when I continue to see good solutions get pushed off and pushed off into the distance, sooner or later, the bill is going to come due and it's going to come due in a bad way. And we're going to have to fix things on an emergency basis and we're paying premiums to do that. And when we're paying premiums and we're shutting down buildings, so when we're renting space over here and renting space over there just to, just to try to keep things stable, that's a sign of things to come. It's not just the FAFF, it's a sign of things to come. And when that starts impacting schools, we've got a major problem. So I think I've said my piece and I'm happy to answer any other questions at some other point, but I don't want to bog this meeting down too much.
No, thank you, 14 years is a long time and you, you've seen it all and, and, and you've, I appreciate everything you just shared.
So I just want to thank you, Mike, for your input and Ben, you too. And I've changed my thinking, I think it should be the Capital Budget Committee, the Permanent Building Committee and the Facilities Department that come together to monitor this for us and figure out our future. And I would just share that I had a conversation on Sunday with our state rep Josh Tarski while we were both protesting the removal of rights from women on the streets side. And he said that, and I was telling him about your report and, and the, the numbers that were blowing my mind. And he said that the MSBA is looking at giving more monies to cities and towns because everybody is having the same problem that we are. So the legislature is looking at giving the MSBA more money.
Correct, the state, the state is likely going to have to help. And if you look at the MSBA's contribution to their projects from a percentage perspective and, and they've escalated them drastically in the last few years, which doesn't follow the trend because of what's happened with inflation. I fully expect that's going to have to continue to keep happening until prices stabilize. Because, you know, we're looking at 850 to 900 dollars a square foot for elementary schools now when five years ago we were at 400 to 500, you know. So there are major, major problems that, and that's not just this town, it's not just the next town, it's the entire state. So until that becomes stabilized, the state is going to have to look at, you know, how much can they contribute to help municipalities like ours? And it's not just full-on replacement projects, there's ARPs, roof replacements that they're, that they're bringing back into their program that, you know, I don't know, because we, we have the Dale Street in the MSBA program, I don't know if they would consider an ARP for the other roofs, but those are things we need to explore.
What was an ARP?
An ARP, sorry, is an accelerated repair program, sorry, I have a lot of awful bad soup in my business.
I had a lot of trouble with, with Arrow Streets.
Thank you, thank you for pointing it out.
Even though you had the terms in the front, it covered all of them for me.
ARPs are accelerated repair programs that focus on roof replacements, window replacements. Sometimes, you know, it used to be boiler replacements, but they stopped going that route for a while, but now that, that is back in because towns are having to stabilize buildings as opposed to replace them. Because there's been more no votes, I guarantee you, on projects in the last year alone than in the previous 10 in, in MSBA, because the prices in towns are having to face these huge financial decisions. So it's not unique to us and some towns are choosing to kick the can and vote no. Some towns are choosing to accept it and replace buildings. But ultimately, we're, we have to make our own decision as a town, so.
Any other questions or comments for Arrow Street? I'll get you hooked into more than you were bargaining.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming and appreciate the study, thank you. Okay, our second item, yes, we are on number two of.
Very long list.
Nevermind, it's, it's the bigger number, double digits. Continued discussion of parcel B requirements committee and the RFP development committee formation and process. By way of background, if anybody's not aware of what's going on here, earlier this year, the, the select board was presented with sort of an unsolicited proposal by a developer who's interested in putting a commercial, primarily is interested in putting a commercial basketball complex up on the developable land that we have south of Hospital Road. The, the proposition was that in addition to putting up that commercial basketball facility, that this particular gentleman has a practice of working with towns, offered to build a, a town parks and rec facility, which this all came up in a very opportune, timely manner, right after the FAFF center got condemned. Suddenly we have somebody who says they'd like to build a replacement resource for us for free in exchange for letting them build a commercial facility at the state hospital. And, and the whole thing would be intended to be sort of a collaborative effort. So the basketball facility that is the commercial facility would certainly be available to support the town's basketball and perhaps other recreation resources because they say they, they work with the town. Now, we can't just go and sell somebody's sole source piece of property. So that introduced a set of questions, if it was a good idea to do it, around how to go about doing it. Speaking personally, when this first came up, I expected overwhelming across the board support for this project because suddenly we have this capital expense that we have to pay for and we've got a developer who's coming, offering to build it for us in exchange for being able to build another facility, which would have added to our commercial base. And one of the more interesting things in the conversation I had was that the developer fully expected to pay market price for the land on top of all of that. So I was originally thinking this would be some sort of a trade-off between, do you want to get paid for the land or do you want us to build you a new facility? And in fact, he basically said, we can have our cake and eat it too. That, that was the starting point of this whole thing. When we had our first, I think it was our very first discussion in, public discussion in a select board meeting, a number of people came up, there were, there were a couple that came to speak in favor of it because they work with youth sports and things like that. But a number of people came who were interested, who basically said, don't do it, that's a beautiful piece of property, it should remain as open space. When you're coming up Route 27, you can see the campus and I like to, I like, was a painter, there's a number of different people that like the open space and want to keep it that way. Now, the town had already designated 12 acres of land over on the Holcris property in order to get the state to bless the idea that we're going to be able to develop land south of Hospital Road. The idea of developing that land is an integral part of the, the state hospital strategic reuse plan, which was the result of a five-year public process where the public said what they wanted. So there was, it's not like we made this up, that was always the plan. The open space and recreation committee, when they updated the open space and recreation plan, identified a need coming from the, or a desire coming from the public for a community recreation facility. So that's another plan. I, again, speaking personally, my kids, my youngest son wasn't born when we got here and the Parks and Rec facility was number five on the list of priorities. He's now in his late twenties and he's in New York, so I have no skin in the game around looking for a facility. But I am interested in trying to figure out what it is that the town wants. And what I'm looking at is two plans that were the result of extensive public participation processes over the last five, six, seven, eight years that came up and said, we want a facility and, and a deliberate plan to try to set up the ability to do some sort of development south of Hospital Road, probably as much as a diversification effort as anything when we, when we were coming up with the strategic reuse master plan. And now at least some voice here in the town, some voices here in the town saying, no, we want to just keep that as open space. And you should find somewhere else to do Parks and Rec if we're going to do that. So that is all kind of what I see the scoreboard reading like right now. But as a result of that, what we've concluded on the select board is we need to go through a thoughtful process to get to a resolution of the question, does the town want to use town property for a Parks and Rec facility? Or does the town now no longer really have that great an interest in those things and really wants to preserve open space and we want more open space? And I think a year, the hope is in a year from now, we'll be able to have that, that decision made by town vote. And the town, the way it will be made is, at least is, and I've been doing some of the graphics work on this, I have an updated, so I'll give it to you, you guys here. But the idea was to figure out at the select board level what those 12 acres would be. And that's taking into account people's sensitivities about, don't ruin the sledding hill, don't ruin historic places, don't, you can't go to places that are environmentally difficult. But somewhere in that 37 acres or so that's down there, there's 12 acres that we presumably could do that would not overly intrude on the aesthetics, not intrude on the environment, not violate historic desires and goals and requirements that we could do something with to actually potentially, in this case, build a facility that might be in the town's interest. And the idea on the table is perhaps we could find a way to do that without having to cost the town anything. Later, what we just talked about, about the cost of the town, if you can find a way to get a facility like that for free in, in terms of the acquisition costs and people will say, well, it's not free to use it, and that's all fair. But acquisition, that would be a good thing. The concept was three things. Select board and some selected people would figure out where those 12 acres would literally be and would make sure that we don't have any unforeseen legal difficulties with setting that up as a piece of land that could either be leased or transferred, sold. A requirements definition committee, which would be a committee that would be focused on bringing the stakeholders who have an interest in a recreation facility. And Mel is here, I'm not calling it a Parks and Recreation Facility, not because that's not going to be a big part of it, but because in the open space and recreation plan, it was not just Parks and Rec that people asked for, they were asking for a community recreation facility that might actually support some things that are not classic Parks and Rec. I think Medfield Outreach is talking about benefits of maybe having a place that teenagers could come and not necessarily be doing athletics, but could be doing something. Perhaps there'd be opportunities for the arts, culture things there, I don't even know. And perhaps COA would, would like something that they could use, there might be some ways to do that. This, that committee, their job would be to figure out what it is the stakeholders in the town would like to see, synthesize those into the best compilation of a requirements document about what the town would like in terms of a facility, probably a recreation facility, but something that would be what the town wants. That then would go to an RFP development committee. And the RFP development committee's job would be to take this thing, the wishlist that the town has, reconfigure that into an actual RFP that could be actually put out there to allow developers to come in with proposals. And there'd be, they'd figure out what the criteria should be. In this case, it's not, what's the most money we can get for the, well, the money we can get for the land is going to be a piece of it, I think. But the benefits to the town in terms of things like offering to build a facility for the town at no cost. Those kinds of things all come in, the question is what would be the best thing we could do to best meet the needs or the, or the desires of the people who want a facility? When we have that, that RFP has to be done before we get to the town meeting where people vote on an article on whether or not to authorize the town to dispose of the property. So everybody see how this is? The best picture of what we could do with the property if we sold or leased it. Let everybody see what that is. Go to town meeting, ask for the authorization for us to dispose of the property. That's the referendum between the people who want open space and the people who want something done there. If it passes at that point, we then have the RFP to go out and, and actually try to find the developer that we want to hire to do the project. The basic process is the same process we followed for the state hospital, the campus redevelopment that, that brought Trinity in. Before people authorized us to sell that property to Trinity, everybody that was voting on that authorization article knew what the plan was for what we were trying to get done there and, and heard from us, the commitment that this is what we want to do with the property. So if you authorize us to sell it, we're not going to suddenly throw that out and do something completely different. And that's how we got to where we are with the Trinity and the redevelopment of the hospital. So that's the, for those who haven't been listening at all, that's, that's the scheme I think I first set up so far. Eileen and Pete haven't yelled at me about it, nor has anybody else. I'm not doing it because I own it and I'm advocating for it, I'm just trying to make sure this momentum is in place and we move forward. So for anybody who's interested, if you look at the updated meeting packet for tonight's meeting, at the back of it, I think, the end of it.
It's actually in order.
It's actually in the right spot, she's so good. She's so good.
But I can also share it if you want.
Yeah, why don't you share? That'd be great.
Why don't you do that? Yeah. I have five copies, so I'm going to give you guys.
Can I just put something out there to answer one of the questions based on the email that did come to us this week prior to the meeting? Because Christine, you can kind of nip this. There are a lot of residents that believe the old transfer station on 27 is buildable. And that is not a true.
Not current.
Okay. And, and so because it was not capped correctly, we can't touch that, we can't break that ground. There can be nothing put on there that would, you could put solar panels, but you could not put a home or a building.
We can't put solar panels on it.
Right now, we can't even put solar.
Good point. We can't even put.
We haven't closed it, so until we close it, I can't give a description of what we could do there until it's been fully closed.
And, and just again, because here we have a, a meeting here in July and we're trying to get to next May to potentially have a vote, it's not going to happen that soon.
No.
Mike Petit was not talking about the capped part of the landfill. He was talking about the flat land down by the railroad tracks on West Street. I've told him that I think that's too wet to be buildable.
I think it's, I think that's a, an active wetland, yeah.
Yeah. And I think our, our plans on that for years have been to put a solar farm on there when we can. Just think about it, if you've got a landfill and you put a cap on it and you're on it, then you want to dig a hole in it to put a foundation for a building on it. I, I grew up in Secoc and actually, the Secoc Library is on the site of the former landfill, but it's not on the landfill part, it's on the front end where you drove in. And even there, I think you have to worry about site stability, but.
I just wanted to put that out, just because there are people that have come and said there's all, and that's not the only person, that email's one that draw it, but the last time at this meeting, people came and said, why aren't we developing there? We can't.
Okay. So let me go through, and thanks, I should have thought to have you put this up. And I'm going to go through, if, if you guys are okay with this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to go through it quickly. Again, I'm not trying to own this and I'm actually putting this out there as a way for anybody to give feedback. So you go to the next slide, just by way of review. So these are the three, this is what I just explained, three committees or three groups, select board augmented, you'll see what that is in a minute. Their jobs, figure out what land can we use? Requirements committee, what is it that people want? If we put something there, RFP development committee is what do we need to put out in order to get developers to respond to the proposal? Goes to warrant article, if it gets voted down, thing's dead. I think it's open space. If it gets voted and approved, then we move ahead to try to actually get the contract. That's, that's kind of the, the setup. You can go to the next slide. This is a really, if anybody, we wouldn't necessarily know this, I spent a good part of 40-year career as a consultant, as a project management consultant, so there will always be a schedule and I actually will always want a budget and a responsibility matrix. But if you just look at this, if we're trying to figure this out in the next year so that we could vote on an article at next May's town meeting as opposed to our normal process of taking two or three years to have long-winded, meandering, unstructured conversations. We want to do it in one year, the select board's got to get its act together so that we know what the land is, let's say by the end of October. We need to have figured out how to set up the requirements committee so they can start working in September. This is again, just me, so if you don't like the months, you know, fire away. But basically, that committee around the requirements has to get their job done pretty much between September, we figure they're not going to want to be doing a lot of stuff in the summer, and the end of the year so that the RFP development committee can pick something up in January, get it completed, because it's going to have to be vetted with the public far enough in advance to be able to make it onto an article for the May town meeting. So they, they may start earlier than that, but if you, if you really look at the schedule, it's looking something like this in order to get stuff done. And that's part of why I'm doing what I'm doing here, is like, let us not be the momentum killers over the summer if we can avoid it. Now you can go to the new stuff. So just very briefly, again, this is all available online, so you can get it if you want to take the time. But select board, overall purpose of the group is to identify a specific plot of land south of Hospital Road that can be made available to a developer. And you can, the rest of the stuff here is, you can read it, I'm not going to read it all. Goal is to identify property that would be attractive to a developer, that also minimizes slash avoids negative impacts in other areas that are relevant to this product, property. Now, I then went a step further, and Bill's probably the only guy here who's going to let us do in here. In each one of these, I basically said, so what would this working group composition be? This is my fantasy football team roster, no one is committed to this, this was Gus sitting at his desk this afternoon writing it up. And I said, well, I think all three select board members are on it. I think Bill Masaro's on it because he knows more about the details of the contracts that we have when we bought the property. He knows about the historical location of sites, he knows about environmental issues, historic considerations, so I will be really sad if Bill won't help us out with this. I think the historical commission, the historical commission should have a representative on this. When we talked about it the first time, the head of the historical commission came up and I, I got a little testy with him because some of his comments kind of sounded like, well, I don't think you can really do a whole lot there. And I think what we need is the historical commission to tell us how we can do something there that does not violate the aesthetics and the concerns that the historical commission has. So they, they're, I think they have to be on, but they're coming on with a spirit not to derail, but to help us figure out how to make it work.
Christine, just remember, there's also a historic district commission.
It wasn't the district commission that was there, it's not the historic, I, I do know that. And you're right, it was the district commission, it wasn't the historic. So I'll change that, that's a typo. Bill?
Both commissions are in half-time. The memorandum, I'm standing with the whole broader.
All right, so maybe I was only half wrong.
Medfield Historic and Medfield Historic District.
Whether we need two or one, the point is, we need someone on these, in these groups, we need someone who's going to focus on the issue of coming up with the, supporting the process to come up with an RFP that we would want to use if we're going to move ahead with development. It can't be the, this is not the debate stage over whether it's open space or a facility. This is, take your best shot at what the best facility might possibly be in the town's interest. Then we put that up for the town to decide whether they want to do that south of Hospital Road, or if they don't care how great an idea it is, they want open space. And then we're done. I think somewhere in here, you need a commercial real estate, someone with commercial real estate development expertise. One of the places I'd look first is anybody but me on the MSH Development Committee. And then I think we probably need some degree of legal support to make sure that in the, and I'm not sure which of the multiple lawyers we have involved in various aspects of the hospital we might go to, but it's probably going to be one of them. So that's, that's what the select board needs to get done pretty quickly between now and October. Next slide. Requirements committee, what we're doing is, this is a stakeholder requirements gathering committee to try to get the best definition of all the people that have an interest in something there that would support recreation. It's this committee that's trying to bring all those threads in and weave it into a coherent picture of what we would be trying to accomplish by doing something on this site. Parks and Rec Department Board Chair is one for me, again, fantasy football. Parks and Rec, I thought could possibly, would possibly have a second one, and what I said was a programming voice. So it's not, it's, you know, it's a little different than being on the board maybe, but somebody who can talk about how things work. Medfield Outreach, I know Kathy has been talking about wanting, you know, that there's some things there, and I would thank somebody from Medfield Outreach to get at what I call non-athletic slash social functions that this, this facility might support. I think the school department, and I think athletic director might make sense. I can, I can confess to bias here, I had my boys all ran indoor track. Tri Valley doesn't have very many good indoor track venues. If you're putting in a basketball venue, you could put an indoor track around the outside of those basketball courts. And I think the town could have, come up with, the high school could come up with a great indoor track venue. And by the way, that would probably be a favorite running place or walking place for people from the seniors in town. Because if it's raining, it doesn't matter, you can still use it. So, but that's me being a, putting in a biased plug. I think COA representative should be there to talk about how seniors could use this. This is, this is health and social stuff, it's not just, you know, sports. And then I, then I think one or more youth sports program representatives, these are the people that are running, I said baseball, soccer, basketball, and it's like, I'm not trying to get eight people on there, but some number of people who are not part of town departments who still have an interest in town facilities. And they're, and that's just the ones to make sure we've tapped all the groups that would have an interest in a facility like this, so we make sure that we, we can do Bill, I didn't, I, I, you could talk me into putting arts and culture. The reason I didn't is I was thinking of Gene and I was, I was saying, it's going to get muddled with Belforge there, and then Belforge wants to be involved in that. But I'm glad you're here because if there is a way, I was going to do it, I just wasn't quite sure how to make that work. And again, this is my fantasy football team, so it's, it's got no validity to it other than, it's a starting point. Then you go to the third one. And that's the RFP Development Committee, it's probably a smaller committee, their job, put the, put the RFP together, that, get it out there to the public before our town meeting so people know what it's all about. If they pass the authorization to dispose of the property at town meeting, then move forward with actually putting the RFP out, administering the competition, coming up with the, with the decisions, and probably supporting out through contract award. I, I think in one place I had written that they would do it all the way out through completion of the, of the project. And it's like, I don't think that's, nobody will want to do that probably. But out through contract award to where we have somebody that's there that can do it. Then we'll deal with the project management of overseeing the project when we're there, it's probably facilities. I, I said a permanent planning, building committee member, I said, or an MSH Development Committee member, that's negotiable, it could be two too, but that's negotiable. Parks and Rec Department Representative, and my point was, someone who's familiar with facilities management. So this is going to be the contracting piece, but it would be kind of nice to have somebody who understands recreation department, you know, operations, that can make sure that what we've got in here makes sense. Procurement specialist, I'm not even sure who we have that's qualified for a large-scale, you know, real estate development contract, but I'm sure we'll find somebody or Ben has hidden talents or, or somebody. And then again, we'd need legal support just from a contracting standpoint. The one other thing this group might have to do is, similar to what we had to do with the state hospital, is to get the word out, float, draft RFP with potential developers to get feedback, to make sure that we're not doing something stupid in how we structured the, the RFP. That worked when we did it with the MSH contract, RFP. The impact we got was all positive. We were worried that the design guidelines might have been too insular and that developers say, forget that. And instead, we got good news back. So that gives you some assurance, you're going to get proposals if you do issue the RFP. You go to the last page, the last slide. And then the process overview, I've already described this, which is, RFP gets done before the town meeting, vetted, everybody knows what it is, the vote at the town meeting, can we sell or lease the property? If we can, the RFP gets, gets sent out. So that's, and, and the bottom point is maybe the thing to take away, either way that town meeting vote goes, I think that finally gives us an answer on the sentiment of the town. Thirty years, there's been a Parks and Rec facility in the, in the priority list, thirty years, we haven't put any money into it.
Well, and part of the reason why it was earmarked for Parks and Rec during the whole state hospital acquisition is, when I was on Parks and Rec and chair back in 2007, that was the plan. You know, it was a, it was a, if anyone knows a CrossFit building on Adams Street, it was that type of structure, right? So it wasn't anything fancy with brick and, but it was very basic, but it was earmarked to be right there at the top of McCarthy. So I think that's part of why that, that the sentiment was there, and we already had a lot of Parks and Rec activity going on there.
So my point is, the proof of the pudding, and my guess even, the most ardent advocates of Parks and Rec, because I know some of them have put a lot of years into this, probably wouldn't like one answer, but maybe would step back and say, okay, well, if that's the, if I've been barking at the moon, somebody finally told me it was the moon, it wasn't, it wasn't a basketball hoop. And at least we'll have certainty.
I like it, I'm a bone candy cutter. I think it's, I think more than anything, it's going to give the residents an opportunity to voice their opinion. And, you know, we saw a very small group come in that one night, right? And I say small because it's multiple thousands of residents and there were maybe 20 people here that night. So it's going to give time to get all the feedback, hear from all different parties. So when it goes up for a vote, it's not something the three of us did on a whim and just put it on a warrant article. And I think, you know, you said earlier, Mike, I mean, these are the things that people have to look at. What are we trying to do? It's going to, there's going to be difficult decisions, but if we can be doing certain things to save money to be putting dollars into other projects. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm a fan of this because I, it, we only have a limited amount of space and I am so concerned about our taxes over the next five to seven years, it could be ugly, like beyond ugly, and I don't want to see that there's ways to be creative.
Mark?
Your select board augmentation committee or augmented committee, just a word of caution, and I'm just the messenger here, so don't slip out. But to the extent that the members are members of town boards or committees, that's fine. But private parties representing private interests raises potential problems.
Yeah, I don't think I didn't put any, yeah, so it wasn't my intent to put a, like, let's put a, if I could find a developer that absolutely had zero interest in this, but was a really good developer, I guess I would consider that.
Anybody like the, you know, it doesn't have to be a for-profit, it could be conflicted if they're working, for instance, like the private arts and cultural, if they've got a separate, they're not a town border agency, if they are, that's fine, but if they're not and they have a separate interest in that.
So it's not the select board one that that applied to, it'd be the, it would be the requirements committee was the one where we brought the stakeholders. But are you saying that we shouldn't have people from some of the town youth programs that are not part of a town department?
It raises issues, that's all I'm saying. They need to be scrutinized.
Which is, somebody who headed up Medfield Youth Basketball, for them to be on this, to give guidance, to give reality to the numbers, that would not be acceptable?
It's, it's viewed as a potential conflicting situation as far as the ethics.
All right, so then it could just be a, a mom or a dad that's been involved with youth, these might not be in the commission, but they've been in the program for 15, 20 years and they know what they're speaking to.
Yeah, just have to scrutinize what the people's credentials are.
I, I think, take the caution for sure, and I think we cross the bridges if we come to them. My, the best comparable thing I can think of there is on the MSH Development Committee, in order to get people that know what to do about a big project like MSH Development, you're bringing people in from, it would be like Mike's on the permanent planning, building committee and you work in the industry. Well, yeah, that's why we want you there. And it was the same thing.
As long as it's not a project, he's actually, there's provision for that, that's, and, but when you're actually directly involved, in its immediate, that's where there's a project.
Well, we'll cross that bridge.
It's almost like an abut, or by analogy.
So if, if Anton were to volunteer to be on that committee, we probably wouldn't have.
Yeah, that would not go over well, that's what I would have you know.
I got that. Yeah, no, but I take your caution. We'll cross the bridge when we come to it. I think what I was about to say is, on the MSH Development Committee, a number of the members of that committee are on the financial side of large-scale developments. And so even though they weren't like a Trinity, they have been very conscientious about, gee, I can do this for a while, but maybe when we get to this other part, I'm going to have to step down. We've had one who did. And so we were thoughtful about that, so good caution. This thing, as I said, is available online if anybody wants their own personal copy. And I get, I've got three extra copies here if anybody wants the souvenir copy from tonight.
Do you want any comments from anyone right now?
Well, that's what I was going to say, if anybody has any comments, feel free to.
So can I, can I have my comments first?
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So you were saying that you hadn't gotten pushback yet, so I'll give you some pushback. This is Gus's plan and maybe Eileen's plan, but this is basically Gus's, Gus's plan at the moment. I come from a very different starting point, which is that I see this land as one of the premier sites in town that is only going to increase in value as this hospital site gets developed. So for the reason that, and I happen to like it as open space myself, but, so I don't see any great need to rush to develop this land and to, and to come up with a plan. So I, I start from a very different position on that, on that ground. And I, I don't think there's a problem with having a discussion about what the town, and it's the residents, it's what the town wants to do with this. It's not me, it's not Gus and not Eileen, it's, it's what the residents want to do with it. And so I, I guess I'm not, while I'm not in a rush to do it, I don't mind some sort of process starting up and having people look at it, but I just come from a very different starting point than, than Gus and Eileen seem to be starting.
And Pete, you've, you've, you actually expressed your opinion about before we ever had our very first public meeting, which was why we had a number of people who were against it, in my, my view. I didn't get mad at you last time and I'm not mad at you yet, but you've compromised your ability to actually participate in this in an objective way. Because you've already said what your opinion is, which is fine, and I appreciate your candor. This whole process is intended to basically set up the option so that people see what's there. And the referendum on whether or not we do anything with that property is the article where the town either does, or doesn't approve the disposition of the property. It's pretty straightforward. I'm trying not to force an answer. I'm trying to set up as objective a view, as opposed to delaying a process. We can take ten years to think about this. In fact, in many ways, we've taken thirty years to think about it, from my perspective. It's been here thirty years. I'm actually trying to force a decision point here, after thirty years. After my youngest son not even being born when we moved here, and now being in his late twenties, and all that time, there was supposed to be a Parks and Rec facility built at some point. I'm trying to force the issue. I have no skin in the game. There's not, I don't need the facility. I, from the standpoint of what do I think is good for the town, I think the town would like a facility, and I'm prepared to support that possibility. But I'm not, my biggest concern is that people would try to get on these committees, who have a predisposition, who would try to derail the process to go in the direction they want it to go. I want the people on these committees to be doing their absolute best, to come up with the best idea they can. And then the debate over whether this should be open space, or whether it should be used the way that it was originally intended to be used for something for the town, we'll have that, we'll have that discussion. I'd like to have it next May.
Well, and I think the thing that's so important, is we had one meeting, I think it was in February, and all we did was have a gentleman come up and give a presentation. And ever since then, I've had people, whether I'm walking up at the state hospital, or out to dinner, and somebody says, oh, yeah, you're building that basketball facility. I'm like, oh my God, how did one meeting with a presentation of just an idea, literally a concept, get to that we've already made our decision, we're going forward? We're not even close to that. And that's why, what you're putting together is a very, I'll use the word formal in the sense that we're going to be able to give residents a very clear, open path to start bringing their feedback, good, bad, or indifferent. I don't care if people hate it, but Mike just stood up there and said a very valid point. We need to start moving on things. We don't have a FAFF Center, because we didn't do something back in 2007 by one vote. One vote at a town meeting, and we couldn't move forward. And one vote shot that down, and then it just got shelved, because everyone was, who was involved with it, just said, forget it, I can't keep pushing a rock uphill. So now we're at the situation what we're in, which you're setting up, and I support a hundred percent Gus's, let's make sure we've got a way for bring a constructive feedback. And then if we do bring something to town meeting, it's, these are the things that we've looked at. It's no longer, well, we have a rumor, we have someone that might be interested, it's no. This is what we're thinking we're going to put out for an RFP. So there's structure, and there's less doubt. Right now, there's a ton of doubt.
So Gus, you know, the fact that you and I may have a different starting opinion about this, doesn't deny me the right to have my opinion, and be part of the process, and to talk to the people in town about my opinions. So I mean, you're trying to shut me out, apparently, from the fact that, from what you said, at least, which I think is kind of surprising. But Eileen, I was very surprised when the Medfield Park and Rec Commission, when they lost that close vote, didn't come back to the town the way the schools did, when they lost a vote.
Because the town administrator literally said, you don't, after, we did everything we were supposed to do. He was going to give the support, and it was, nah, sorry, I'm not going to do that. So at that point, the group was like, okay, we had the town administrator telling us to do the following, and when we did everything, we brought in building people, finance people, we brought in, we did it all. And then it was like, yeah, sorry, you don't have our support after all. Everyone just said, forget it. What do we have? We can kill ourselves, and when the person that tells us to go do this, and we do what was asked, you get the stiff arm, you kind of move on. And that's why, when I ran for this position, that's the one thing I said. That's why Hinkley Helpers, I told them from day one, you step up, you volunteer. And that's why, Mike, fourteen years of being on that committee, that's a lot of work. And so someone steps up, and they're trying to give time to this town, volunteering, because they may have four kids at home, a full-time job, a bunch of stuff, and they're volunteering for this town, I'm going to give everything I can to at least give that opportunity a chance to move forward. I'm not going to stiff arm them.
I just, it was just my opinion, but after seeing the schools lose a vote, and then come back and get their schools, I was surprised that the Park and Rec didn't come back.
Were you on the Select Board back then? I mean, there's nothing prevents a Select Board member to continue to, I've gone after, as Mel knows, I've sat in your meetings and pestered you guys, because I know that you need a building.
Let me, let me draw this discussion.
Bring it back.
If you've got something else.
Yeah, I've got other things. Thank you. So I guess my sense is that we've had this random proposal for the basketball facility that's come forward, but I would open the door a lot wider. I think that we should, I mean, I know that Belfort, Jean has said that Belfort is in that land as well. And so that I think that anybody should have an opportunity to take a look at it, and the town should have an opportunity to see what the various proposals are, what the financial return from different things might be. I mean, you might make a choice to, and the Park and Rec building is not free to the town. That's getting factored into the acquisition price. So we shouldn't be using that term, free.
Pete, I don't even know what the acquisition price is.
No, no, but you shouldn't be using the word free, because it's not free. The town is giving up the land, and...
No, the town would sell the land, we're not giving up land.
But I bet you, I bet you the cost of that Park and Rec facility is built into the acquisition price that gets paid.
You're going no more by Anton than we do, because that's not how we play.
Well, this is why I would like to have a wider net that's thrown out there, so we can see the different things that might come forward, and make a decision if you really...
I agree, I agree with you.
Gus, let me finish, please. Thank you. I mean, there might be things that produce more revenue for the town, and the town might want to make the decision whether they want to keep it as open space, or do something that produces more revenue.
Those aren't the, those aren't the two criteria.
Says you.
No, Pete, you've got to stop here for a minute.
No, no, let me, Gus, let me finish, come on.
Well, no, no, no.
Gus, you talk endlessly, and you have tonight, at both of these.
Fair enough.
Number one and two, we're two hours in.
Five seconds, Pete. It's not just an issue of revenue. It's not just an issue of revenue. Go ahead.
No, of course it's not. It's a complicated issue, it's a, and it's a very pristine, it's not pristine, but it's a very beautiful spot. And it's one of the last large parcels the town owns, that the town can do something with. The other parcel that we have is the arboretum across the street, which is where the cottages are for the employees at the state hospital. I take a different attitude towards that. I would develop that land in a much higher density use than the zoning that the town passed for it allows for. I think the town zoning basically thinks that they would just rebuild, or renovate the cottages that are already there. I wouldn't be offended if we had a high-density development there that would produce a lot of money for the town, which means that you have maybe smaller units that are closer together, something like Old Village Square, where you have net revenue to the town of $600,000 a year, because there are no schoolchildren that live in that development, for the most part, so it's all profit to the town. And if we want to talk about helping our taxes that we have to pay every year, that's sort of a housing development, because we know that people want to live in Medfield. And if we design the housing in a way, we can do it, so that there will not be a lot of municipal costs from it. And that's what Old Village Square tells us. So the residents need to decide, that's the most important thing. And we need to figure out, over the course of looking at this, what it is that the residents want. And so that's, I'm just worried that your plan is skewed towards a basketball facility.
No, 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 please don't interpret it that way. Anyone listening, that is not the way this is going. The basketball facility got brought up as a first.
You're still talking to Anton.
Well, no, no, you know what's funny is, I don't think anyone's talked to Anton since that night.
No, you're talking about, you said, oh, you don't want Anton, something, you made some comments about him.
No, we were kidding, we wouldn't put him on the committee, because he obviously has it. Like, we wouldn't put anyone on this committee that has an agenda for their own, versus putting people on this committee that are going to reach out to the residents of this town, and find out what we want. So I get what Pete's saying. We're not going in with an earmark of, this is what we want. The one thing we are honing in on is, when we traded twelve acres over at Home Quest to the state hospital development, it was for a recreation facility. Now, the open space plan said, maybe it's more of a recreational facility for townwide, not just for youth. So, yeah, it's, we need to, at the end of the day, we need to move forward and get feedback from the town. Otherwise, we're just going to be spinning and spinning, and we're not going to make any progress in getting money in here to try to help with all these projects. We just saw a hundred million dollars potentially over, what, the next five years? That's, your taxes, if you're paying eleven thousand today, you'll be paying twenty-two thousand in five to ten years, because that just doesn't come for free.
Do you have more?
Yes. So one of the things that really interested me at the annual meeting, the MMA Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting in January this year, was a company that basically will provide us a mechanism that will tell us what our residents want. Because they set up a statistically significant sampling of our population, and you only need like three or four hundred people to have a statistically significant sample. And then this company will select those people for us, and then you can, it was seventy-five hundred dollars a year for a town our size, and you can do polling to ask your residents what they want then, and you get it back from the sample. So, I mean, you're positing this process of setting up a committee, trying to figure out what the residents want. And I think that for seventy-five hundred bucks, I would suggest that we, you know, buy this tool, and see what it tells us.
Think about what our school building committee has done. No, well, the only thing I'm thinking is, you guys hear that, is...
Thank you.
Well, our school building committee is already doing that. It's like, we don't do that already in this town. Our school building committee has put together an unbelievable reach. All right.
Thank you so much. I actually was finished.
So on that note, a school building committee has done a reach. Like, I don't want to be spending money, seventy-five hundred here, eleven thousand there, it starts to add up. No, if everyone writes us and says, if we are paying twenty-two thousand dollars for a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar home in Medfield, we're fine with it, I don't think that's reality. I mean, right now, I think the average tax bill in Medfield, Christine, you can correct me on this, is nine, ten thousand dollars bare minimum?
No.
It's around thirteen thousand.
Okay, so, all right, I was trying to go low, and so if we're doing double digits, everything that we're talking about is going to come out of people's bottom line. All we're trying to do, or at least I'll speak for myself, I'm not going to even speak, is, is look at pieces of land that we can attempt to monetize, if the residents want us to. But we're only going to find out if they want us to, by going out and having the communities step up and say, we're interested, we'll give you feedback. Our school building committee, right now, has been doing unbelievable reach. So, Chris, you, Medfield insider, you put it out there, you get responses from your links all the time. The school building committee, they can be reaching out to their database. There are ways to get, matter of fact, the school building committee, when they did the most recent surveys, they got beyond what your segment is to give good feedback. So we're doing that already, and not costing the town. I just am extremely cautious in just spending money and giving it to an outside consultant, when we have the people in this town that can do it, and save us money. So I, I mean, I...
So a minute, a few minutes ago, I was attempting to have us all shut up, so that people in the crowd could talk. The one observation I'll make to what Pete said around finding out what people want, one of the hardest things that I had to try to think through, in just putting this simple, very superficial thing together, and it's not really my plan, I'm not advocating for something, I'm just trying to lay out something, and I was trying to do something that sort of made sense to me, that's all. But one of the tough parts, when you have one particular proposal that kind of came out of the blue, and you say, no, we can't do that, we have to have a competitive, you know, we have to have a competitive process, and there may be more than just what this one person suggested, trying to figure out how to open up the possibilities without just having it be, so what do y'all want? And the real trick about what Pete's suggesting is, one way or the other, if you're going to look at doing something here, you have to find some way to bound the scope of what it is, the focus of what it is. Because if all we're going to have is a philosophical discussion, that's fifty thousand feet up about how should we use our land, nothing will happen, because we'll never get to, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing anything with the state hospital, right now, if we did it that way. We had a purpose, we knew, we had some common objectives that people had coalesced around. I think there are a lot of people in town that have coalesced around the objective of having a recreation facility, and I think there's another group of people in town that have coalesced around open space. So, you know, I don't think anybody's trying to put an office building up there. So I don't think we need to entertain that. So anyway, I'm going to shut up. Did other, I saw a lot of facial expressions that said people in the crowd probably had things they wanted to say, so, and you for sure, we're going to, half an hour ago, we're going to get up, so.
Hi, Tracy Hogan, Twenty Hospital Road. I kind of take umbrage in what you're said to, Pete, when the committees that you've planned here, there is no one from any kind of open space, or any kind of conservation on any of these committees. So you seem to be putting your viewpoints on what you think is going to be needed for a committee.
So, you tell me how open space, somebody from open space is going to contribute to...
Can I just finish what I want to say first, please? You also do not have the main stakeholders. This area sits on the Bay Circuit Trail. So I don't think people in town really want the Bay Circuit Trail destroyed for a development of a basketball facility, or any other facility. Also, you're going to have to deal with the Endangered Species Program, because there are kestrels and bobalinks that nest in that area, right through there. And they're designated, and now the state of Massachusetts designates their habitat. So if you're going to take down trees in that area, that has to go through the state. And there is also a natural spring right there. And I don't see anybody from the Conservation Commission on this as well. That natural spring leads into the Charles River, right there. So I don't even think that this parcel is developable, because, just because there was an Odyssey House there in eighteen hundred, doesn't mean that it's going to be passing a development standard right now. So to give away this property, and because this is so protected, I would think that would give you pause, that this is a real asset to this town. People come from miles around to go birding there, to go hiking there, the Bay Circuit Trail is right there. Whenever I go to any of the concerts at the hospital, everyone in the audience says how beautiful this is. What a vast, you know, resource that we have, that we just want to destroy, doesn't make any sense. If we want a park and rec building, put it where the FAFF Center is. Put it where it's accessible, because you don't want a community center that children can't ride their bikes to. They can't ride their bikes to any kind of facility that's at the hospital. And there's the Kingsbury Club, that is less than a mile away, so we're going to do a duplicate facility, and destroy our natural resource for a facility that should be in town and more accessible, where people can walk to it, where people can bike to it. It doesn't make any sense to destroy this natural resource, in my opinion.
We'll do Bill, and then Jerry, okay?
Okay, number one, I do not want to be on your committee. I will provide source material. I'll do the same thing I did for the Master Plan Committee, and that I'm doing now, under one of the things I guess I'm up for renewal for, which is the consultant to the Select Board, unpaid consultant to the Select Board, on any environmental issues relating to the hospital property. So number, just a couple of things.
I don't do very well in fantasy football, incidentally.
We bought the twelve acres as part of Parcels A and Parcel B. And everybody should understand that all of the requirements, all of the legal requirements that were passed down to us from DCAM, and what we purchased, the memorandums of understanding that we have with the Mass Historic, it's the exact same thing for all of Parcel B, including whatever little piece of it you want to sell, that we had as what we had on the main campus. That says, you have MEPA requirements, you have notices of project change, you have indemnifications for the state. The same thing that we passed down to Trinity for what they purchased, we'll have to do when we sell any parcel, whether it's the arboretum, whether it's the North Field, whether it's the laundry parcel when we finally get it, or whether it's any piece of the twelve acres that we have in Parcel B. So you can, you can plan to go forward with this, without knowing what you can do with it, until you find out, number one, what's there, until you realize what the impacts are of having to go through, having a developer go out and do a notice of project change, which probably costs him a hundred thousand dollars if he has to go through MEPA, to see if Mass Historic will agree to perhaps encroaching on some of the historic sites that are there. So I spent, let's see, probably twelve to fourteen hours putting together an eight-page package that I sent to... putting together an eight-page package that I sent to Christine and then I sent to Gus. I will send it to the rest of the selectmen going back to 2009. So, I've been on this merry-go-round here now for 16 years. It took me 16 years, by the way, to get, finally get a developer to agree to the water usage at the development. 16 years to get them to agree to 65 gallons per person per day, which, by the way, the town is meeting. All right, so anyway, we need to know what's there. DCAM did not do a total site assessment of the material that's there. They identified stuff that was not in the same category as the Mass Contingency Plan stuff that they found at the hospital, the super hazardous material or anything else, but there's a lot of unknowns there. I laid out in the package that I sent to Gus and to Christine what we needed to find out. I laid out a plan whereby you can talk to Mass Historic, you can talk to our own lawyers to see if perhaps some of the requirements that were passed down to us in the LDA for the whole property, the 269 acres, some of which is still retained by the state, whether we have to comply with that or whether we don't have to comply with that. But the text right now says that we do have to comply. So, these are all things that have been done in parallel before you even agree to what would go there or put it before the public to say, "Can we do this? Can we do that? Would you like us to do this? Would you like us to do that?" You don't know yet what you can put there. All right, so I would suggest that some of the first things that the committee is going to have to do is you're going to need some environmental research, you're going to probably need some sampling there. There's stuff that's been put there since the property transferred. One of the farmers was putting fertilizer there for years. In fact, I think we had some complaints from people that lived over in the Copperwood area about the smell of what was being put on the fields and was being stored over on parcel B. We have asphalt grindings, I'm told, that are up there. So, we need to know what's there. We need to find out what's there. The town's going to have to spend some money to find out what's there. We're going to need legal reviews to go through what the obligations are that we have to pass down and everything else. This is not something that you're going to turn on a dime. You need to do some work. I will gladly help anybody who wants to know more about this. If you want a copy of the package that I sent to them, most of you know how to get me. I'll send you a copy of that package.
So, Bill, the only bit I could be wrong in my thinking, but the select board task there, when you said "there," we don't know where "there" is.
Well, that's, well, it doesn't, at the moment, it doesn't matter because right now it's parcel B. You have the, you have the right to buy 12 acres anywhere on parcel B. The requirements for those 12 acres are the same requirements that are for the whole parcel.
Exactly. So, my point, Bill, is so all the work you're saying needs to be done can't be done until you know where the 12 acres on parcel B is. That's the very first thing that I put in there.
So, would you pick those 12 acres someplace where it's already polluted with hazardous material that potentially...
You gotta pick the 12 acres.
You need to know the whole...
Phase one ESA.
Now, you can, you can say, "Look, we're not going to put it on the sledding hill. We're not going to put it on the vertical slope where some kids are sliding down." That's never been an issue. I don't think there was ever any intent that we would use the sledding field for anything other than recreational purposes. The state wants the rest of the property to be used for agricultural purposes, but they gave us 12 acres to use for anything we want, presumably complying with state regulations and all the town regulations permitting all the rest of this stuff and what they passed down to us in the land disposition agreement. You don't know where those, you can narrow it down. You certainly can go out there and you can say, "Well, we're not going to put it here because there's this or that or something else." There are ways around some of the historic stuff. I gave you quite a bit of information on how you can go about, I mean, you need to look at those...
We don't even have a process yet, Bill.
No, but again, I've laid out for you a roadmap for the committee. And another thing I don't want to run into is getting down the road and finding out that we're ready to go out for an RFP. The RFP committee puts something together and doesn't have any environmental issues in it. I mean, I spent many, many hours getting that into the LDA for the hospital property. So, I just don't want to have to do that.
Yeah, that's fair.
All right, so.
Jerry. Jerry Bott, 7 Curve Street. So, I'm going to start with some thank yous. I actually thank Gus, Eileen, and Pete for bringing this up. This is an opportunity to potentially solve some problems. We should be in an open meeting talking about it. The offer that came through, I may or may not agree with it, but I think it would be irresponsible for us not to look at every opportunity. And I guess that's where I'm running into problems with the process. Up until now, explore these things, but, you know, I've heard that people who disagree or open space or history are, you know, they have an agenda. And that term has been used a couple of times. They have an opinion and it's valuable and it's valuable to get it now, not down the road. Because I'm going to tell you, in a year from now, if we're sitting here and people feel this was pushed down their throats, it's going to fail. And it's going to fail at a time where we don't have the margin for error. Park and rec needs a facility and we should be doing our best to look at every option. I think the FAF Center in the center of town, personally, I love that idea, but maybe it's not fiscally responsible to do it. I don't know. But you're going to rip up that space to build a school and you're going to have a lot of construction going on there. And are there ways we could put a plan together in the center of town and walkable distance with bikes, half mile from all of our schools, that we could have a culture? Now, the second thing about it, I was on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. In fact, I was at this very dais when we had this conversation about a cultural or a park and rec center. There was nothing in the Open Space and Recreation Plan that said it should be up at Hospital Hill. It wasn't. They said we need it. There was disagreements if it should be a big for kicks type of thing or should it be a community center, but we need to do more research on what that was. But what was in the Open Space and Recreation was preserve historic resources, historic heritage landscapes. It's page 107, for those of you at home who want to follow along. Protect, enhance, and connect existing natural resources and acquire additional open space. Guide developing and keeping with the town character. Preserve the town's character and its historic cultural resources. Support environmental protection and promote the responsible use of natural resources. It also talked about celebrating the downtown and activating the downtown. In the vision for Medfield, reuse, reuses, and it says, "A Medfield that reuses its vacated state hospital and is now a vibrant and vital part of the town. The chapel has been converted to a cultural and art center. The historic buildings have been renovated for a variety of uses and the historic landscapes provides opportunity for recreation, including hiking, kayaking in the Charles River." There's no large building there. There's no recreation center there. So, all I'm saying is before we, we say that people have agendas, there are legitimate Venn diagrams that have to come together and it's similar to the first school building project. Overwhelmingly, people agree that there needed to be a school. I don't know if you remember, I was on the no side of that school. I know people's memories might, but I desperately wanted a school. And I'm upset that four years later, we don't have it. But I wasn't the reason that we didn't get a school. It was that the town, 52%, didn't want that location. If we want to get a park and rec building, we have to do the work in advance of getting people to agree, "We need it. Here's where it's best for the town" and there'll be compromise. But I, in this town, I don't think it's going to be open space. I really don't. So, and I could be wrong on that, but I think we have to do that work before we put, we're having an RFP by May, because if that fails, then we're back at the drawing board with park and rec with no solution. So, I'd rather do everything we can to pull the community together to feel good about building something. And I, to be honest, Gus, I felt that, I felt that was being crammed down my throat. And I'm sitting, I know you don't agree, and then you cut Pete off who had a dis... I mean, both of you have articulated that you think this is a great idea. You should have the right to say that. Pete gets one sentence out and you cut him off for biasing the project. You all should be able to say whatever you feel and we in the audience should be able to disagree and not have an agenda. So, I'm just asking because I believe we have to do something. And I was there for that depressing first part of tonight's meeting where we basically need $4.8 trillion in the next, you know, I mean, I get it, but it doesn't mean that we rush to do something that I'm going to tell you, we'll divide this town again at a time where we really don't need a project that's going to divide. And you can disagree with it, but I'm telling you, there are a lot of people who are upset. Instead of attacking them and saying they have an agenda, let's talk. And I don't think it's going to take more time. I think it's actually going to save us time because we'll have a project that will have support of the town.
So, can I just make a quick comment? That, I think the one thing that people don't see is that 40% of our town is open space conservation land. So, it's not like this town is overdeveloped. And we have been very, I mean, how many years ago did we buy 25 acres off of Phillips Street? So, when we can, we are trying to acquire space. And there's open space coming up along 109 over the coming years that we, you know, we really have to balance. What are we going to be able to try to get ahead of? What can we work on that, we don't have much open space in this town that the town owns. And, you know, if you look at, if we are able to get a school project in place and it is a ad reno, new build at Dale, I think it's pretty confident that, that if we can bury the, tearing down the $2 million cost of taking the FAF Center down in that project and we're able to make use of that space, we could put a park and rec center there. I'm not opposed to that, but if we can get somebody, I'm not saying it's going to be the basketball guy, to help us do some other community type of center there, because right now we're talking parks and rec, right? So, that's going to be very parks and rec centric. If we could do something that gives people the ability to be in a building, great, let's find out. I think in the next, between now and May 1st, all I want to do is find out the temperature of the town. Are there people interested or not? And that, and whether we go as far as the RFP in this, I just want to find out, is it worth our time or not?
But I would suggest respectfully that a group that has no representation with differing opinions is not finding out what the town wants.
I totally get that. That's why it's a fantasy football. We can change. I was right, taking notes. I'm like, I don't care how many people are on this to give their viewpoint. Like, that was Gus's list. We haven't even had a chance to tweak that.
He specifically said he doesn't want people who have their own agenda, who might disrupt us from being able to come back.
Somebody's looking to derail it.
Let's be clear about what I said. The process, you don't, if you say you don't like the process, that's fine. The process that I laid out was a process that gave the people who wanted to put a facility or something there a chance to come up with their absolute best idea, picture of what that would be. The opportunity for the people who disagreed with doing that because they want open space, and I was pretty clear about this, would have been the opportunity to vote in a warrant article on whether or not to dispose of the property.
So, Gus, my suggestion...
If you, if you want to finish.
Absolutely.
For the people who are, want to argue open space, have to wait. They can argue as much as they want in the public now, but in this process of trying to figure out what a facility would look like there, having those people come in to argue for open space is arguing against the fundamental purpose of that.
The very first thing I said was, park and rec or a cultural center, there's overwhelming agreement.
It doesn't mean anything, Jerry. It's not agreement for 30 years.
Well, let me, let me finish it. So, we have an opportunity to put a plan together that gets that over the finish line, not at the state hospital. Why would we limit it to a location? If we're trying to get the park and rec finally done, shouldn't we be exploring the absolute best opportunity that can get a town vote and support? And I think there's something there, just like I think the school building committee this time has gone out and listened, done surveys, took the time, and I think that's going to put us in a better position to pass something that's good for the town. And I would just suggest, instead of saying it's developing that lot, you know, how do we foot it on 12 acres? Let's get a park and rec building. What's the best place economically, open space, that can, that can generate support?
So, to respond to your comment, for me, it's not just a park and rec facility when you, when you talk, when you say that. I'm also looking at a school and I'm looking for ways to raise money that we put into the reserve account that we have to blunt the impact on taxpayers of a new school. So, when the FAF Center blew up and suddenly out of the woodwork came an opportunity with somebody who would say, "I can give you, or I'm offering to give you a facility and I will pay you for the land. I'm looking at the money that we're getting for the land going into that account to help offset the school."
No, let me go back to the very first thing I said. Thank you for doing that. I think that's wonderful to get that as one of the data points for us to get a park and rec building. I don't think that is the only thing we should work on in the next year because if with fans, if someone doesn't agree on the location or open space, we now have another year we don't have a park and rec.
Then understand your position, I think, unless you've got some ideas as well, is that we are not going to basically capture any economic value out of that property now before the school project. So, there isn't really a good way to do that, that I know of at least, that would get us that kind of revenue that could help contribute to the schools. That's a big factor.
Oh, let the people speak. Thank you for listening.
Jerry, I had a question actually because you had said something about open space. You were giving in your opinion, but I didn't quite understand it. Was your opinion that people would prefer open space there than a building there? Is that what you were opining on?
Well, in the document that's Open Space and Recreation, I read what the objectives were and what the goals were from the Open Space and Recreation Plan.
No, at one point you were giving your opinion. I thought you were saying that you thought...
I want to understand all of it. I want all the options laid out. I respect open space for sure. I might be more in favor of that, but I'd like to see all the options so I can make a decision. And there are big trade-offs and they're huge. And that's all I'm really asking is that we thoughtfully put it all out there. And that's why I actually liked the disagreement and I think why people wanted to hear you speak is, give us, I mean, thank you, town officials, put it all out there. Keep doing that. Because if this feels like there's an agenda, it's going to divide the town again and we don't need another one of those. We can do this together. We have a lot, townwide master plan and the open space and recreation have a lot more in common on what people want. So, it's more how we do it and I just suggest process.
Thank you.
Just a clarification. It seems to me something came into... The Medfield State Hospital master plan for the area south of Hospital Road, namely what was in parcel B and everything else, called out a possible park and rec facility. And the logic behind that, just like the logic with the chapel, calling out the chapel in the master plan and everything else, was to get infrastructure started in the, in the area of the hospital. So, the, if you read through the master plan, you'll see that they talked about an initial infrastructure build to get infrastructure to the chapel and also that the park and rec center would provide at the start of infrastructure at that end of the parcel B property. So, you got to read through it to see it there, but that was there. Didn't say it's going to be there. It just said, "As a possibility, this would be it." And then you had the proformers and everything else showing what the cost of that infrastructure was going to be for both of those two facilities. So, it's just...
I think my main point on that is that...
No, no, I'm just...
But the master plan never said parcel B is open space. It was always intended to be something that would, something would go in there. I understand, we weren't, nobody was smart enough to know it had to be a park and rec.
20, 24 acres of it is agricultural. I mean, there's no question about it, parcel B.
Right, I'm talking about the 12 acres.
But the 12, again, it would have been very nice if we'd known where we were going to have those 12 acres back then, if we had a magic ball, a crystal ball or whatever, to say, "This is the best place to put anything. These are the 12 acres we want. It's clean. Somebody's put wells there to test and haven't found PFAs or anything else. It's wonderful." We don't have any of that.
Anyone else?
Hi, Renee Schweikart, one minute comment. I'm going to reiterate the same opinions and/or options that were just mentioned by Jerry on your side, but I won't go and, you know, continue on and on. But I just want to say, I do think that we need to be creative about the process. I, I think that this does need to be resolved one way or another and park and rec does need space. We've obviously seen it with the modular aspect at Hinkley Pond, not being able to go through due to cost. And I don't think we necessarily should only focus on parcel B. I think there are other areas within town. We've already talked about Hinkley Pond. Granted, that was for a temporary structure, but who's to say we can't put something a little smaller there, but yet also permanent? Who's to say we can't utilize the FAF Center again if we have all of these other expenses? I don't think another expense, honestly, with Prop 2 and a half, will make that significant of a difference. I know there's big costs coming up. I know that. So, I'm not fooling myself and I know you guys are not fooling yourselves or the town by not admitting to all of this needed maintenance and needed construction work. But I don't think we should lack in creativity. And there's also other existing spaces that we currently have, like Bell Forge. If you're talking about Medfield outreach, perhaps the Bell Forge Center should be utilized a little bit. I don't know. I'm not going to speak for Gene Minio and what can be done there, but we do have other facilities. We also have the Zulo, which is a beautiful space and perhaps, Bill's here, but I don't want him to be put on the spot and talk about that, but there's a lot of different areas... that. But there's a lot of different areas within our town that might be appropriate for activities that are community-based activities, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It might not be a basketball court at the Zulo Center, of course. But I'm just saying, let's get creative. And when you put together these committees, don't save them, you can only focus on Parcel B. Maybe in addition to thinking about Parcel B as the option, they can also think about, well, what about another area, like part of our facility or and/or activities can be done at Bell Forge, or part of our activities can be done at Hinckley Pond with a smaller permanent building. Or perhaps at the FAF Center, once it's reconstructed or rebuilt, or whatever comes out of that, if, if it is available for us post the Dale Street construction. You know, there's all kinds of options, I think. So I don't think we want to pigeonhole ourselves into anything in particular and only have it be Parcel B, because as Jerry said, it could become very contentious if people are really in love with Parcel B and don't want to see something there. But the only option they have is to say, it's either Parcel B gets developed or it doesn't. That leaves Park and Rec, Community Center, Outreach, whatever it is, kind of left with nothing. So I do think that the process should include other locations to consider. That's all.
I would welcome the creative ideas of what these are.
Okay.
Because a lot of people have said, we just have to be more creative. And I'm, I'm trying to do something with an opportunity that's here. The people who have spoken tonight are saying, but we don't like that. We want to, we want, and yeah, broader is fine. I'll welcome the creative ideas of ways that we can address Park and Rec facility at no cost to the town. If you're saying, well, we could just buy this too, I, I don't think I'm going to be prepared to support that from a financial standpoint. We're looking at a hundred million dollar school. That's apparently, I'm an optimist now, even thinking that's the number. And, and as I said, for thirty, I've been here thirty years. And Parks and Rec has always been a facility that people want. And it's thirty years. So...
Yeah. And, and then there's only, I mean, there are other properties too in town, like Lot Three.
But when you say that, there really, I mean, the one thing I wish people would understand is, we really know what we can and cannot build on. So when people say that, we have tried to explore where can we put things. Like, you know, I love the idea of the FAF Center, but look how small that parking lot is. And you, you have a significant program that our Parks and Rec Community Group uses today to put a twenty thousand square foot building in there, then have parking, and you're in a neighborhood. So the overflow is now on Green Street. So like, the things like, to me, I'm like, I would love to say we could do it, but the reality is we can't. And then, yeah, I mean, the FAF Center, that's a very small building, and we're talking double or tripling it, on top of now we're trying to look at potentially a new Dale Street. There, the only reason we're, I'll say I'm falling back on at least exploring. If it comes back, don't do it. I have no, I'm not going to lose it out to sleep. But at least the community is telling us yes or no. I, I love that people are here tonight. But there are multiple thousand people that can't make it here, that I guarantee will get emails tomorrow, one way or the other. But I think that's, that's the only reason I want to push this forward to the extent, let's hear from the residents. And then they're going to speak. And if it's no, so be it. I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah. I just think, as spoken by many here, if Park and Rec and/or Community Center or, or Medfield Outreach Center is really needed, I think we should have a few options, not just Parcel B. Because if Parcel B is not the answer, then those places, again, those, those, you know, Park and Rec and everything else that I just mentioned, those aspects will not be considered at all. Like you said, in two thousand and seven, we lost it by one vote. So, you know, I mean...
And it was going to be built at, right where it was going to be built, exactly where we're talking today. It was going to be built at the top of McCarthy Park, and we finally bought the property from the state. So literally, if it had passed, all the plans that I have from two thousand and six and seven, all the architectural plans were built at the top of McCarthy Park. Right? So I'm not going...
Is Parcel B considered top of McCarthy Park?
So when you drive in and you go down to where the little lacrosse fields are, it was supposed to be sitting right there. So it wasn't going to block the sledding hill, but the, the, the concept back in two thousand and seven, for those that live in town, it was supposed to be right at that, as you kind of cut in, to be sitting right up there. But to the point that was made, I think maybe by Jerry, is like the infrastructure, all of that wasn't laid out at the time, but that was where the town was pushing. So, but again, like, I just want to hear from the people. And if it's no, I, again, I don't care. But I just, I know we don't have places to put it right now, that the town can sell. Now, we can buy land, but okay, now we're going deeper into the, to the, like, that doesn't make any sense. So we're just trying to do what's, what's physically responsible if it's what the community wants. If they don't, so be it.
Yep. Okay, great. Thanks.
Do I like your idea of thinking creatively? And, and you're mentioning Zulu, got my brain thinking. I know that Bill, the proud new owner of a building. Congratulations, Bill. But I know that you need an elevator. And I'm thinking to myself creatively, maybe, you know, there could be some sort of partnership where...
Maybe Medfield Outreach, yeah. Because you've got it right there, right near the high school in downtown. Yeah. Okay.
Well, I was thinking Parker and Rec or, or somebody else, but...
I'm not thinking of the...
I don't want any of my town facilities in the Zulo. I love you, Bill.
I, I think there are opportunities for Park and Rec around the school, too. That, I mean, you know, that's such a, a wide open process now at that site, that I think that we could probably put a Park and Rec facility on that site somewhere. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
Mel.
Finally. Mel Seebolt, Medfield Parks and Recreation Commission. As Eileen has stated, we've had at least three studies since two thousand and six that conclude that a facility is needed and also should be no less than twenty thousand square feet. FAF Center is off the table. It's eight thousand square feet. We, we actually gave some of that land for the parking lot at the, at the Dale Street School, to the school department. Also, logistically, Hinckley, Hinckley Pond, also off the table. It would, it would, a building would take up too much space and interfere with our pond, our entire summer activities. So we, a- as Mike, a- as Mike said, we've, we've kicked, we've kicked it down the, the road for too long. And I, I agree with Gus. As far as stakeholders, I think the only stakeholders that, from the start, should be municipal stakeholders. Once you open up to third parties, where do you stop? Somebody has an idea, hey, we could put a, you know, we, we could, we could put a, some sort of commercial building that deals with food or whatever. I mean, you'd, it, it cuts down, I think, I think the proposal is correct, that it should be in keeping with the initial proposal. I mean, Parks and Rec hasn't sat down with Anton since that meeting, that first meeting. We don't know. What would be proposed may not be acceptable to Parks and Rec. And that would be, you know, quite frankly, the end of the story. But what was presented was, to Parks and Rec, was just unbelievable. And we, we did vet him as far as, we, this is what he does nationwide. And we just, you know, we feel that now is the time. And we, you know, we'd be happy to, to entertain really anything that would put a Parks and, a new Parks and Rec Center anywhere in this town. But you are correct, we've already looked into it. That is the ideal location. And you are correct that had it passed, would be, would be there now. But, and as Gus says, it's been over thirty years. I moved in here in ninety-one. And, you know, I'm a, I'm from Brookline originally, the very first Parks and Recreation Department in the country. And there is nonpareil. I mean, they, I grew up in that, in that atmosphere. And when, this is my sixteenth year, and I try to bring, bring that to, to Medfield. And just because of resources, et cetera, the biggest thing is, we need a building. I mean, our, our programs would dramatically increase. Also, as far as, you know, we've talked about the, the naysayers here. We've told our people, we've been inundated with calls, you want us to show up. I mean, if you don't mind, we have over eleven hundred families in our database. We'd be happy to have them contact you and tell them what, tell you what they want. I'm not going to do that. Trust me. I mean, you won't even answer, answer my email.
I, no, I will, I answered it. I just...
No, no, I know. I know you did. I know you did. But here's, you know, the youth groups in town that we partner with, just the basketball, youth, Medfield Youth Basketball alone, every fourth through eighth grade boy and girl in this town who plays travel, practices in another town. That's, that's obscene, quite frankly. And those parents, I know when my son was practicing at four kicks, I was, I was going to, taking the family to dinner at the horse and carriage, not here. And, you know, I was getting gassed down the road. And it's, it's just, it, it's something I, I see as, I know where our support is. You saw what three women did, the Hinckley Elbers. I, and the, the opening day there was unbelievable. We had state senators, state reps, and it was, you had to park on Green Street in order to get near the place. So, you know, we know what we can do as far as promoting it. And we like the start and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me, go ahead, George. You've been here. Yeah.
Sorry, George Lester. Just a few, few comments. The, the, I, you know, I'm not going to rehash the, all the other potential locations, except to bring up Three Ice House Road, which is a ten point seven one acre parcel. And it's just a big sand pit. Now, all I've ever heard about why that's not appropriate is Kingsbury Club can veto it in a contract. So let's, can't we just make a deal? Buy them out? I don't know. Use some leverage. There must, it just, objectively, it's the perfect site, in my opinion. And if it's a, simply a contractual issue with Kingsbury Club, maybe bring them in as the developer. I don't know. Maybe there's a way. It's something that should be considered with all the other locations that we've been, we've been talking about. And, and I just, to kind of reiterate Jerry's point on, you know, let's get the town to come together behind something. It feels too much like you're pushing this down a road of where, let's just get this plan on the table for next year's town meeting at, at the hospital. And then if it goes down in flames, it's the open space people who are the bad guys. You're trying to pit the open space people against recreation interests. But we're all together. We all want the same things. And I was part of the Open Space Plan Committee with, with Jerry, and that's, that's what we said, was we have beautiful resources to protect. We also need the big, we need a Park and Rec facility. So, anyway. But those are just background. What I wanted to really say was thank you for recognizing that when we came before, when the, when you had the, the plan to go to town meeting earlier this year, the, the first criticism was you weren't saying, where were the twelve acres? What were the, so you've got to define that as a, as a subdivided parcel out of the, the forty acres first. So I'm glad you recognize that. And, and that's the right thing to do, is to move forward. So I just assume you'll need, you know, you'll need like a consulting engineer who can help draw a sub, you know, essentially a two lot subdivision plan out of it. But then, as for, like what Bill was saying, you know, to actually figure out what's the optimal twelve acres to carve out, that's where you should consider the interests of, of, of who's, who uses and has impacted most on the larger parcel now. So you want to hear from, like, the Friends of Medfield Forest and Trails, or the, the Bay Circuit Trail, basically. And actually, I, I can tell you, the, the, this has already gone up to the DCR at the state Trails Director level, aware of what's going on here and how that will impact. Because I got an email, not from DCR, but from the AMC, but it had the DCR person on it. So they're already watching this and, and to see if there's an impact to the Bay Circuit Trail. But also the high school, cross-country course, the Hunt Club interests. And, and then, of course, I don't know where Trinity fits in with this. They have to have an opinion. So...
Where what fits in?
What's that?
You don't know, I didn't hear who you were talking about.
Oh, sorry, Trinity. And, you know, that, 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 you know, they, they did the whole traffic study, and, and that's been moving forward. And then the intersections are being redesigned. And then all of a sudden, this facility would, I assume, completely gum up the preview, the traffic study, because it'll, you know, change the traffic pattern. So I don't know. My point is that for, for the car, well, actually, that's, that's more to developing at all. But for the, choosing the twelve acres, I'm just saying, consider those interests. And whether those are people on that committee, or Mark says, they shouldn't be representatives from non-town bodies on the committee, but okay, maybe we, at least consider their interests. Let us speak to the committee. So, yeah, those are my, those are my opinions.
For what it's worth, George, the twelve acres, in my head, I'm saying, it's a challenge to see if there are twelve acres possible on that site.
Yes.
It's got nothing to do with who's affected. It's got to do with all the constraints. As there are twelve acres there, and if anything, Bill, you probably rained on what was already a pretty rainy parade, because you're raising other issues around what the state foisted on us. And so, well, maybe or maybe not, or probably only over a period of time. So...
Well, again, you're doing a great step to, to figure out what the twelve acres is, because earlier this year, that was the real concern, was...
Thank you, George. That's the first, that's the first positive comment I've gotten off my process.
Well, George, I will comment. Well, a quick comment on, back in two thousand and seven, we did look at Lot Three. And it actually, as much as it may be ten acres, I think buildable because of conservation land, wetlands, whatever, it turns out to be about three point, I'll say three point six. So it wasn't as big as we at Parks and Rec was hoping we could get. It's, so, trust me, and we would, we will look at that again, but it's that...
Thanks. Oh, okay. Uh, let's see. We got one person. Jeff Hyman's out there with his hand up. So I think what we'll do is, or you've already promoted him. So Jeff, go ahead and jump on.
Hey there.
Hey, Jeff.
Hey, guys. I'm not going to reiterate everything, but one, one thing that is an observation, when you watch this meeting on Zoom, is you really get to sort of focus on everybody's body language. And two things stand out to me. One is, somebody once told me, I gave us one mouth in two years, so we listen more. And I'm guilty, we're all guilty as a human, so she's not listening. And I, there were lots of points made tonight. And I heard some things, so, a couple of things. One is, you know, I heard the word naysayer. And I heard Jerry say, you know, don't look that there's an agenda. Look, everybody, we're, we're in this together. What I'd like to say is, and maybe you guys, the Select Board does this, but watch this meeting, okay? And just observe, because a three sixty on how we all act is really helpful. Okay? It's personally, it's, it's never fun to watch our Select Board, who's in charge of, you know, lots of responsibility in this town, treating, treating each other in a condescending way, or a passive, a, a way at which it, it diminishes someone, someone's importance. There's only three of you, and you all should be heard. And I'm saying, please, listen, watch this meeting, and learn from it. Thank you.
That's how I do my meeting minutes, just the record. I've never approved a meeting minutes without watching Zoom. So, four years of watching Zooms.
So I think we've beaten this to death for tonight. Is there, oh, you want to beat it to death a little more? Come on, Chris. All right. Completely different, okay. You got to argue for the facility.
Different points. Chris Potts, Seven Curb Street. I only, I have three points I'd like to make, and that is, I would highly advocate that the first committee that is formed around this whole topic be focused on community engagement. And, and, and not to go forward with anything until we have more community engagement. I mean, it's one thing, you know, I always hear, we have these public meetings, and anybody can tune, it's July first. People are on the beach. People are focused on national things going on right now. And, I mean, this is the timing for people to tune into this and actually have the ability to have input. We're here. There are people here. But there are a lot more people in this town that really need to, to dig into this issue. And they need to have a, a much broader opportunity. And there needs to be a committee that is committed to actually getting the word out and, and pulling people together, and not in the middle of the summer. The other thing I would say is that, you know, I'm, I love looking back at old documents. I do this all the time, to see what information has can be, been conveyed in the past. And I found it really interesting is that, leading up to the special town meeting in two thousand and fourteen, there was a townwide mailer that went out. And it specifically, and I'm looking at it from the town website, and it talked about Parcel B. And it mentioned that the terms of the sale, two different entries here. It said basically, and this is what we got to get us to vote at town meeting, for the state, to, to buy the state hospital property. And it basically said, use restrictions. Parcel B limited to a maximum of one municipal building. Then down below, under cost considerations, opportunity, under opportunities and concerns, sorry. sorry, sorry, vision, under vision, it talks about parcel B, the Sliding Hill property. And I just want to clarify, based on this document, they used the Sliding Hill property as, as like an umbrella term for all of parcel B. It wasn't just, just the Sliding Hill. But it talks about keeping the Sliding Hill as is, and maintain open vistas on this portion of the purchased land. So, totally understand that we're not talking about, about doing anything on the Sliding Hill, per se. I'm just reading what's in this document. But then it says, cite the construction of a town recreation building near the current site of the Odyssey House, consistent with the limitation that only one building may be built on this parcel of prime agricultural land. So, I think where my concern is, is that if I'm looking at this again, and from a historical perspective, we're being told that the only thing before this town, before the special town meeting, my assumption is, despite what Bill said, which was very helpful, that the state says we could build whatever we want, commercial or whatever, us as voters, before we went to this town meeting, we're given the impression that it would only be municipal building. So, this is what was in this document, that was in this mailer, that we all got as residents. So, I just want, I think that's really important to take into consideration, because it feels like, all of a sudden, we're being told something completely different. So, I just want to bring that up.
Two, can I make one comment of resident in Medfield in 2001, whatever we did, the Council on Aging Building, which is supposed to be the center of Medfield? That was supposed to be a center of Medfield. Yes, it was being built for seniors, but it was going to have full access, and, and for all the right reasons, it's evolved, there really is a senior center, and, and it's a great building for the seniors. So, I appreciate what might have been said in 2014, but now we're in 2025, and there's a lot going on in this town, and things have evolved. So, if we, if we end up, and I'm not saying, again, if we don't, I don't care, but if we end up deviating, we're not deviating drastically, it's not like we're putting some massive building potentially there. So, it, it said Parks and Rec, I know why it said it, because what we did back in 2007, but we, we've, we changed it from what the seniors, what the center of Medfield was intended to be to what it is today, and that's okay.
But, the argument is to talk to the community about this.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's the most important thing.
You just brought up another perfect solution, yeah. They, they, it closes at, what, 5:00, 7:00, some nights?
We, you can't.
There'll be evening programming there.
It's very, and all respect to the Council on Aging Board, and, and to the director, it's, it's not what it was, what was voted to be, it is what it is, and I'm not getting into that tonight.
And Council Aging and Parks gets Rec together.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're, we're now going off into lots of things. I want to just close this out. I, I don't think we're going to get a lot more constructive. I will close with one comment. You know, when you're on the select board, and this is, I think, all three of us, we're not single-issue people that have, oh, let's do this one thing and see it through to the end. Those, those things only happen when somebody, as, as you mentioned, the Hinckley-Halbers, when somebody steps forward and says, this is something I want to do, I'm getting it organized, I'm pushing, will you help us? And the short answer is, yeah. When we do things, certainly the way when I do things like this, this wouldn't even be on the agenda for discussion in my mind if we were talking about funding the construction of a Parks and Rec building. The only reason this ever showed up on my radar screen is because an idea came up out of the blue that potentially gave us an opportunity to move ahead with the Parks and Rec building without having, having, have a financial impact on taxpayers. I'm, I am very concerned about where that, that piece of this is going. And so, and then, and so, for me, it's, it's a jigsaw puzzle, it's got a lot of pieces. This thing made sense, because it's connected to something else that we need, that's connected to something else. And when it comes to Parks and Rec, I, like Eileen, I, I don't have skin in the game, but I think the town, that's something that the town wants, so that's why I was predisposed to do it. My idea, although Pete said it was my plan, it was just my best shot at a process that I thought could get us somewhere. I, and I would welcome other people with other plans on how to do that, I, I don't really care. I was, I was sensitive, you're right, it's summertime, and people are on vacation, which is why it was the select board group is the only one that really was carrying any water until next September, because we're going to be around. Presumably with, except for Bill, rat. That, I figured with a small group, we could do that. Maybe it was a bad idea? I mean, at least with this group, it sounds like most of you think it was a bad idea, it's driving too much. Okay, I'm not sure what the, what the town thinks, but that's my thought. That's how to get to something, but it was, in fact, driven by trying to get to an answer within a year. Along, starting with a committee, that's always, everybody, town always does that. Took us five years with the state hospital, and it's going to take us more than a year to do it that way. And so, if that's where we go, just at least recognize that whatever we might ultimately come up with is not going to be in the next 12 months. So, all right. Can I close this off, and we'll move on to item three on our agenda?
I would actually ask that we move to item 16, because Bill Pope has actually been waiting here for something else.
Oh, boy. But you, but, but, Bill, you learn so much. All right, so we're going to go to 16. So, for those who haven't been paying attention, they're going to think that, boy, they, they've been making real progress, it's not even 9:00 yet. All right, item 16 is the one item on the consent agenda, vote to approve the one-day beer wine permit for Zulo First Thursdays and Zulo Summer Thursdays on the deck at Zulo Gallery Center for the Arts for the following Thursdays, all from 5:00 to 11:00 PM. July 10th, July 17th, July 24th, July 31st, August 7th, August 14th, August 21st, August 28th, September 4th, October 2nd, November 6th, and December 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything, Bill?
Trying to make it fast for you.
All those in favor?
You didn't take a vote?
I know, I, I was going to give him a chance to comment before I called the vote.
Okay, well, the cat's out of the bag, I, I, Bill Pope here. And I just, we bought the building across the street, and we're going to be, we're going to be permanent new neighbors, so I thought I'd come over and say hello. And, and I just want to say, we, we were given the wonderful opportunity to buy the building by Tom and Lisa Knight and Gail, who owned it and, and really wanted us to stay there. And we were able to organize, through a lot of effort by a lot of people, 34 investors and donors to help us purchase the building, and Needham Bank was extremely helpful, so we were able to buy the building, and it just concluded last Tuesday. And I wanted to thank all of you for your support over the years, the selectmen have just been great. And Christine and Brittany, you've been very helpful, and going back to Mike Sullivan, really, in 1988, when the whole gallery got started there. So, we've just got a lot of support from the town, feels great to be here permanently. And we do have plans going forward this summer, we have a, our plan for the deck, which you're about to vote on out there, we're getting that going again. We're working actually with Perfect Strangers to have food up on the deck, we'll have our art classes again. And so, we have big plans, we got a, a nice strategic grant from the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund for $10,000 to really help us pave the way forward. And we have a new, a whole new group of, Board of Trustees at the gallery, so we're excited about the future, and we really appreciate your support, and, and I just wanted to make you all aware of that. So, thank you very much.
That's awesome.
And just one...
I was going to say, we appreciate the thank you, even though I told you you'd be on around 7:30.
And one other anecdote about Bill, I was in getting a haircut at Dave's yesterday, I was in the chair, and Bill walked in to basically tell Dave where his rental, rent payments go. Bill is the absolute nicest, gentlest, friendliest landlord you could ever hope to have. So, if anybody's looking to rent, if there's an opening in that building, he's the guy you want as your landlord. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, you got it.
Thank you.
So, Bill, I just wanted to tell you that, that I appreciate your life work on the Zulo Gallery. It's been a clear labor of love, and...
Thank you all. We've been loving playing.
Like Bill and his love of the Medfield State Hospital redo.
I'm happy the deck is open again, I like knowing that.
And you're both succeeding, so thank you.
Thank you, Pete, greatly appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill. We should have, well, it would have been hard to, we needed to know on item two that we needed to go to 16.
I, I tried to get in before 2:00, and 2:00 started too early.
All right. Item three, discuss, we, this is going to be really fast, if anyone wants to see that we are capable of doing things quickly. Item three is discussion on changes to solicitor's license process.
Yes, so, I am going to be very brief, because I don't think much is needed to be discussed here, but a little change in the process, we've heard a lot from residents this week, the police and town administration has. So, we are going to change the process a little bit, we are going to have actual licenses printed out by the police station that has their information, and the dates they are going to be allowed to solicit, and the times. And the, after they are approved here, they will need to, before they start to solicit, go to the police station, they will print them out their little handy-dandy license, and that will be not only for the police that are going around town to be aware of who's out there soliciting, but also for the residents to be able to know that they can ask for that license. The other...
I see it when the person...
Yes.
Is that the door?
Yep, they can ask for that. Yes, they can ask for that, and, and that should be, yes. And another thing we discussed with the police chief, a lot of what residents have asked for is a no solicitor list. So, what we're going to do is, on our website, we're going to create a simple form. Residents can fill out their name and address, and they will be added to a list that the police station keeps, and when the solicitors go and pick up their license, they will get the no solicitor list. And so, people can feel free to sign up on that list, and that'll be kept by the police station, and that was a concern we heard this week. So, those are the two changes to the process.
That may be a long list, it might be easier to have an electronic copy of that somewhere.
Yep, it's going to be an electronic spreadsheet, yep.
It actually makes it easier than it's been in other towns.
Yep. No, no, it'll be printed out and given to the solicitors, but electronically, the police station will manage.
Okay, all right. Because my comment, that side comment was, you know, I, solo, I must have a great roof, because I have solar people coming to my door every time these guys get it. But I think, these, it's, these young kids walking around that have come to our meetings, I, I want to make sure that it is very obvious, because I, my gut is that 99% of them are just going to start walking down the street, and they're not going to know what houses to not go to, unless we can really highlight that.
Yep. Yep, they'll get the list, and they'll...
And then, is there going to be a fraction, that if we get a call that Tony so-and-so has actually been to eight houses tonight, that he shouldn't have been, like, what's our recourse to that?
So, as part of our bylaw, there is recourse in the bylaw already in there. So, if, if the police need to take recourse, there is a fine in the bylaw.
There's, okay, that's, there's a fine, okay. Didn't know what the recourse was.
You may want to put that on the list, update that bylaw, review it for that purpose, it's got fairly low fine, for one thing. It's only $50.
And you can always not renew the license. Yes.
Or, or rescind.
The, the issue this week, though, was somebody who didn't have a license.
Correct.
Because they didn't come, they were, it was, they were just out on their own, so it was sort of a rogue operation.
Yep. So, that's the change. Everything else with, between the background check and you guys approving it, that'll all remain the same, it's just that, those last steps, that'll be changed. Yep.
So, I just want for clarification, for the benefit of anybody listening, so this applies to commercial solicitation. If it's, if it's advocacy, whether it's political, religious, whatever, that's protected speech, and it's not subject to this process.
Girl Scout cookies?
That's, no, that's a sales thing.
So, that's a solicitor?
Yes. And in fact, frankly, I've, I've...
It's not a lemonade sandwich. Yes.
I've, I've maintained that if it's a nonprofit that's actually soliciting for money, as opposed to just trying to convey a message, that they're subject as well. But if they're purely advocating, they want to talk to you about whatever they believe in, that's different.
Maybe we shouldn't raise the fines, this poor Girl Scout's going to have a hard time coughing up $50.
Okay.
Will the homeowner know they're on the list if they've asked for it? Or are you just going to, I'm saying, if the homeowner says, I'd like to be on the no solicit list, and maybe else, I mean, is...
They have to fill out the application.
Will they be told that they're on the list? Will they have the access to it?
Yeah, they fill out the form, you're going to get a confirmation that you've completed the form.
That's what I'm talking about. A confirmation, that's what I mean, a confirmation, that's all.
Yep, through, our website has forms that you can populate, and so, we'll just do it on the website, and then it'll just create a spreadsheet, so...
I'm going to say it anyway, but I mean, I just...
Are you going to keep the list updated, the, the, the current page updated to, to the approved solicitor?
Yes, yes, there are no approved solicitors right now, so, yep.
So, okay, that was one of my observations, so those are cleaned off, okay.
Yep.
And the one suggestion I have is, I think, when I went, look, every once in a while, I actually try to use the town website to see if it's even somebody who ought to know how it's set up, can figure out how to use it. And I, I finally got to the solicitor list, which is buried like three levels down, in the selectmen's site. I would do one of two things, I would either move it over to the police department, which is where people might be looking for it, or, you know, in the, you know, at the front part of our website, where there's sort of a couple of options to ask questions, that might be, you know, that might actually be an important enough question to put on that front splash, still might go to the, the police department, but I was surprised to find it way down as the select board.
Sure.
It's like, whoa, I guess we're the ones in charge.
That's why they might not be filling in.
Right. Okay, thank you, Brittany.
Yes.
No, no votes required there, that's just for those who, particularly for those who complained in the last week, we finally did something quickly, thanks to Brittany.
100%.
Okay, let's see how fast we can go here. Item four, reviewing potential vote on the revised charter for the Capitol Budget Committee.
So, I know you have some questions, Brittany sent them over to me today, so I would like to hold on voting the charter, but I would like to discuss the makeup of the committee and what the rationale was for it, because I have talked to the Capitol Budget Committee several times over this, the last year, is that I was concerned that a significant number, there's three of us, it was Michael LaFrancesca, myself, and Andrew Foster, who are voting members of the committee. That always seems weird to me, when I am actually making a presentation to the Capitol Budget Committee, and then voting on the projects I've just presented. So, I think the school committee should still have a designate, if, if they want to designate Michael, that's, that's up to them, but I think it's inappropriate for Andrew and I to be making presentations to the committee, advising how we should fund things, but then also recommending our own projects. So, I'd like to say, have Andrew, myself, and Michael be ex officio, non-voting, and if the school committee wants to designate him, that's fine.
The only thing I had on that was, what was a wording issue? Because it basically said the five are appointed, and it was unclear, I think, I, I think I suggested, is it, should we call it designated, or, and it was just a lack of clarity on whether the select board's appointing eight or five. I think it should just be the five.
Yep.
Because the others are designated by position.
Correct.
So, that's, okay, it could be maybe a little clearer.
So, I, when I looked at this, I didn't realize that Michael LaFrancesca was the designated member of the school committee, so I suggested adding him as a non-voting ex officio member.
Yeah, I think, I think non-voting ex officio for, for Michael, Andrew, myself makes sense, but I can't dictate if the school committee wants to, to name him as the designate, that should be up to them.
Well, if he's already listed as a committee member, then they don't need to designate him, and they could designate somebody from the school committee, or somebody else.
Well, I'm recommending that you not list him as a, as a member, that it just be a school committee designate.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would actually list him, I, I differ from your opinion, I, I would list him as an ex officio member.
That's fine, I, I'm, I...
Does that make four voting members and fi, four ex officio? Because I thought you did the five to get to a place, right now, it seemed like you were four voting members.
You still have to say voting and non-voting, ex officio just refers to the position.
It says non-voting, huh?
So the, the change here is we're adding another resident, right, that's, is that making up, cause right now we've.
Well, we also have a resignation as well, so uh, Mike Markucci does not want to be reappointed to the committee.
Okay.
So you'll have an open um, residency.
So that's why it's two, yeah, okay.
Well, Median and Rob.
Yeah, Median and Rob are on there as residents.
Yes.
Okay, we're deferring the vote.
I'd like to defer to August, but I just wanted to give some context to get the conversation started.
Yep. All right, uh, item five is board and committee reappointments for FY twenty-six, list of which is attached. Uh, I'm trying to remember how we have to do this, Mark.
You've got, I, I've thought about this, to expedite if you wanna do a blanket motion to reappoint the identified people for the, for the positions and terms stated, that's fine with me.
So moved.
Did either of you have any particular appointments that you questioned? I went through, I didn't, everything looked fine to me.
No, I think I'm good.
I'm, I'm okay with them.
You were, you were left off the Capitol, maybe we put you back on.
You put your back on, sorry about that.
No worries.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Alright, so, okay, good, alright, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that's a record.
Remember next year that we, that's how we do it this year.
Yeah. First time Mark's ever let us do it that way.
Well, no, you can't do that for alcohol, it's gonna be more specific.
Oh, all right. Item six, vote to approve the following appropriation transfers, uh, I'll, I'll list them all. I ha- I have a quick question on E. Town accountant office supplies to slash regional school assessment, thirty-eight cents. Uh, cemetery salaries to cemetery contract services, ten thousand dollars. Equipment repair and maintenance to solid waste disposal, thirty-five thousand dollars. Professional development to town planner department salary, six hundred sixty dollars and two cents. Item E, I'll come back to the question I have, town accountant salary to town administrator salary, one thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents. Uh, and, uh, item F, inspection salary to sealer contract, six thousand five hundred dollars. Item G, workers' compensation insurance to property and liability insurance, three thousand three hundred forty-two dollars. Uh, item H, emergency management equipment to fire operations salary, seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Item I, emergency management stipend to fire operations salary, four hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Item J, facilities salaries to town hall building contracts, ten thousand dollars. And item K, parks and recreation revolving fund to parks and recreation operations, fifty seven thousand four hundred nineteen dollars. The question I had, and this was a technical question on item E, was not the transfer in terms of its nature, but whether you can transfer from town, uh, town accountant salary to town administrator salary. I, they're two separate.
Two separate departments and you can transfer.
You can transfer them that way, that's all, that's the only question I had.
Um, and just for clarification on K, it is parks and recreation salaries to parks and recreation operations.
Okay, so corrected, item K is parks and recreation salaries.
That's good, cause that was boring.
To parks and recreation operations, fifty-seven thousand four hundred nineteen dollars. Any comments, questions?
No, no, I went through the paperwork, it looks good.
I would think this is one of those instances when it would be good if we could actually put it up on the screen so that while Gus is reading them, that people could look at it on, I would just, a lot of times we don't share the paper. I know that it gets sent out, but I think that's helpful to people. I would move that we uh, vote to approve all the follow, the transfers. As revised.
As revised, cause of item K.
Yep.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay. Um, next item is vote to sign the second contract amendment with Environmental Partners Group LLC for engineering and supplemental services in connection with the MSH peer review services. Uh, in the, uh, the amount is two thousand seven hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's approved. Next one, item eight, vote to sign the OPEB actuarial and consulting services engagement letter with Odyssey Advisors for nine thousand nine hundred dollars for FY twenty-five, FY twenty-six valuation cycle. I had, uh, just double checking on, on page one forty-seven of the packet, they call out a billing alternative. You can never, you can either give us all the money upfront, or you can give us half this year and half next year. And I don't care, but I, it, it, right now it's undesignedated, so I was just curious what you were planning to do.
I don't, I don't know, Andrew has just, I think he's paying it all in one year.
I think so, because it, the contract was less than he had anticipated and so I think he can actually pay it all this fiscal year.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Excellent, hold on, and then next is vote to sign the COA gar- the COA Garage Construction Administration Services Contract with Signature Designs for ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, that's good. Next one, item ten, vote to sign the COA sidewalk extension project contract with R Federico Company for ten thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved, where's the new sidewalk?
It's going from the side door.
Oh, it goes around the back, yeah, okay, I did see that, thank you.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, that's approved. Next, vote to sign the contract with Beta Group for design of the complete street sidewalks for one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars, period performance is July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And I wrote down, double check the sidewalks in statement and sow, in the statement of work.
Well, I have a question, I don't know if it can be answered, not that it's a showstopper, but do we know what side of the street, like, on Adams Street between Memorial and West, what side? Somebody asked me that the other day and I was like, I have no idea if we picked the side of the street that the sidewalk's going on. I would assume it's on the side where the school is, but.
It's on the school side.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, let me just ask my two questions. It's on the front page of the Scope of Work, it says, it's anticipated that improvements will meet existing roadway pavement surfaces slash elevations and pavement improvements will be made by the town at a later date. And I, my question was, what does this actually mean? And what I was thinking of is the sidewalks on North Street that are flush with the road. And when I read it, I said, is, is that what it means, or, I didn't know what it means.
I don't, I'll have to talk to Mo, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Anyway, so that was a question, I won't hold up the approval for it.
Okay, I will let you answer that.
And then the other one, it's, it said it's anticipated that town's on-call contractor will do the work and I just said, is this correct? He, they, they were anticipating it, I didn't even know we had an on-call contractor, uh, is that correct? It's, I, that's what it says, it's the statement of work, but it's the statement of work that comes from Beta. So those are the two things on the first page that caught my attention. Well, if you check with Mo, those are the two things I snagged.
Uh, they are, they bid for an on-call.
They did, okay, okay, so, all right, so, did you move?
Yep.
Yep, alright.
Second?
I thought I did, yep.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay, that passes. Next is, vote to sign the yearly contract with their clinical consultant, Rona Karens for Medfield Outreach.
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, that's good. Next is authorize the town administrator to sign the lease agreement with Charles Stark Draper.
License agreement.
License agreement.
What did I just say?
Lease.
Lease, ah, to sign, we're, we've been here for a while. To sign the lease, the license. The license agreement with Charles Stark Draper Laboratory Inc. For use of the MSH grounds to test autonomy software with small drones and ground robots around the structures from July twenty-eighth through August first and.
Two thousand a day.
Yeah, there's a, uh, two thousand dollars a day and on paragraph three, there is a typo that, maybe we don't have to change, but it says, it says, the way it reads, it says licensee shall at times use its best efforts. And it should say, shall, shall at all times use its best efforts, so that's a, just a typo.
So knowing who Draper Labs is, this is probably the Defense Department funding the town of Medfield.
They're doing a lot of interest.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, next fourteen, authorize the chair to sign the state nine-one-one Department Public Safety Answering Point and Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Incentive Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty sec- twenty twenty-six. The amount is for forty-one thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next, authorize the town administrator to sign the state nine-one-one Department Training Ga- Grant Application for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-sixth. Uh, and that's in the amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. And before we vote, uh, page two thirty of the packet, which is the signature, signatory page, we're only listing you here, Christine, but the note at the bottom says, please note, you cannot self-certify your own signature as a single signer listed above, so this is.
I can't tell you how many times that agreement.
Yes, you've mentioned that a few times.
Yes.
Does it make any sense, but that is how we do it.
So you think despite this, you're still gonna get away with it?
Correct, yes.
Because when I did it last time and followed the directions, they sent it back and said, it's wrong.
They sent it back and said, this is not right, so you self-certify.
Somebody else signed to certify your signature.
I had Gus sign to certify that I would do it and they sent it back and said, it's wrong, you have to certify yourself.
You have to sign, yes.
I'll have to train my mind not to react to that one.
Yes.
So moved.
Kind of frustrating. I do one quick comment though.
Whoops, uh, any official licensed document shall have, this is from Jeff Hyman.
Solicitors.
Shall have an easily readable expiration date, so solicitors, oh, this must have been there for a while, sorry, Jeff. Uh, any official licensed document shall have an easily readable expiration date, so solicitors don't continue to use them past the approval date.
Yep, yep.
Sounds like a good idea, Jeff.
Have dates and times.
So noted, we'll pass it on to the police chief. Might have to have, yeah, might have to define easily readable, given some of us who wear glasses, but okay.
Second?
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, that's approved. Uh, we've already approved the consent agenda, last item, item seventeen, accept the grant award from the student arm of Medfield Foundation, the five hundred dollars is to beautify the entrance area of Medfield Outreach.
Love that.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, uh, next, next item on the printed agenda says citizen comment, any of you have the stamina to get back up once again?
I do.
Okay.
Far away.
I just wish Ben was still here, though. I really wish Ben was here, I just, wearing my historical hat, Chris Pott, Seven Curb Street, but I'm, wearing my historical hat, I just wanted to make sure that you all knew how much we appreciated the time and effort that Ben put in to spending that earmark money. I mean, he was so great to work with, he was just, I, we can't say enough about how wonderful he is. So I just, I wish he was here, but hopefully you can pass this on, it's being recorded. Um, but, but from all three of the, the buildings, the, the Griss Mill, um, the Dwight Derby House and the Historical Society, it was a lot to do in a short amount of time and we're just really.
Especially when he got married last weekend.
Oh my gosh! I just wanted to make sure that, that's recognized.
Oh wow, we are big Ben fans here.
Yes.
He's awesome.
Yep.
A quick comment, I just wanted to call your attention to the thing I sent out last week about the Trinity in terms of the Belforge and the response that we need to include the environmental impacts. Trinity needs to include that and I spoke with Maria about that earlier tonight, she was gonna bring it up with, with Trinity, so.
Thanks, Bill.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item, no minutes, so town administrator update.
I just returned to the office yesterday, so I'm going to let Brittany give you the town administrator. Two things, really quickly, one is OpenGov was, our initial launch was today. Um, so now you can find your transfer station application, you can pay, um, and go through the process all online. Um, so no need to visit our lovely ladies downstairs, although I'm sure they would still welcome you to come and, and stop by. Um, so with the transfer station stickers, we also have the building permits process, they are all available online now as well. Later on this year, we will have the rest of land use, um, coming on board, as well as the fire department. And that's kind of our initial phase of this process to bring all our online permitting. Just, the access for our citizens, I think, is, is really important. So transparency twenty-four seven from your home, you'll be able to access, um, those online platforms. Um, and huge shout out to Maria, who has been basically, single-handedly, um, creating these online platforms um, with the help of OpenGov, but she has been instrumental in the process. So, um, huge shout out to Maria on that, um, we couldn't have done it without her. So, take, check those out, use them, um, so we hope that's an easy process. The second announcement is that we are hoping to launch, launch our first Citizens Academy this fall. The interns and I have been working on that this summer. Um, so we are thinking that it's going to be a ten-week program on Tuesdays. Uh, we're gonna open the applications tomorrow, um, but citizens can apply to be part of this academy and it's gonna be basically a civics lessons from every department, um, about what each department does and, and the services they provide to the town. So we'll start off with town administration office, we'll go to, um, finances, so the, all the town accountant and the assessors office will be there, um, we'll do land use department and permitting, emergency services, town meeting, town clerk, um, human services, so the library, the health, um, veteran services. We'll do police, um, public works, a tour of all the bays and the big trucks, which I'm sure people will love. Um, and we'll finish here at a slot board meeting for their graduation. Um, a lot of other towns do it, I think it's a great way to get people involved in the town and then have them be a part of the boards and committees here in town too. So, um, we're hoping to learn a little bit from fellow towns, where we have a couple of calls in the next coming weeks to kind of plan it all out, but, um, be on the lookout for the announcement of that and I hope you all join, it'll be fun.
Good idea, what time of day?
Um, it'll be in the evenings, Tuesday evening, um, so probably, probably six-thirty to eight-thirty is what we're looking at now. There'll be about an hour and a half to two hours depending, and then located throughout town as well. So we can do classes here at the public safety, um, public works building and the COA.
Tuesday evening is not on select board meeting nights, I saw.
They will be on select board e- um, meeting nights, so you can sign up for Citizens Academy. So, I'm sorry.
You can audit on the nights you don't have meetings.
Yes, on the nights you don't have meetings, feel free to, to go and check it out, but.
We're not gonna have an audience anymore.
Yeah, I saw it in the MMA training, but that was really good, I'm glad we're doing that.
It's, it seemed, a lot of the towns that do it say it's been super successful, they've had lots of people, in fact, some towns say they have waiting lists, um, for a signup, so.
Everybody do it via Zoom?
No one does it via Zoom, I think they, they like to have the people in-person meeting. I think it's, you know, the department heads meeting with citizens and likewise, those staff and department heads will teach the courses. Yeah.
Yeah, I just thought, I think that sounds great. And one of the things that I noted on Medfield TV at one point in time were students coming around the building and they sort of interviewed you a little bit, or just introduced.
Yes, yes.
And they said, this is what's done here, this is what's done there, and I thought, oh my god, this is so cool, this is so great that they did this.
Yes, yeah.
So, it's good to have a class doing it.
Yes, trying to get people more involved, for sure.
Okay.
Uh, yes, we'll, we have, we're gonna have a list of public, we're gonna have a list of hires at our next meeting.
All right, next meeting dates, we're, we're on a once a month cycle here so far, unless people in town do enough mischief that forces us to come back. Uh, August twelfth, September sixth, that, so August twelfth is the only, this was our one July meeting night. Uh, and then in September, September sixteenth and September thirtieth, October is October seventh and the twenty-first, November fourth and eighteenth, December second and sixteenth.
And noted on the website does have July fifteenth, but we'll take that down tomorrow.
I just deleted it, it's gone already.
It's always, there's something about reading a list of dates in the beginning of the summer that takes you all the way out to the end of the year, it's just sort of.
Impressive.
It's all going so fast. All right, uh, select board member reports.
Uh, all right, nothing too, too crazy, though, I will comment on, I know that, uh, the police chief sent us the email about the youth police academy, which I happened to drive by a few times over the past week. Looked really well attended, the energy was fantastic, um, just really kudos to them. Um, they have twenty cadets that graduated, um, this past Friday, so that's awesome. And then, uh, Christian Donner sent us an email about the rail trail that the kiosks are set up. So I actually happened to walk the rail trail, uh, a couple of times over the last few days and, uh, they look great.
They look great.
Yeah, really nice job, so kudos to, um, that, was that a Boy Scout project?
Yes.
Yeah, an Eagle Scout, that's what I thought, okay. Yeah, so, um, those are up, so if you're wondering where those came from, we had approved those back quite a few months ago and, uh, it's an Eagle Scout project completed and kudos.
I went to three of the four, uh, sustainable Medfield, sustainable yard tours and it was very impressive. Nice job by Helen Dewey in putting all that together, very good job, Helen.
And the only item I, well, I actually have a question for either or both of you. Did either of you attend the planning board meeting for the Trinity? I, I didn't read Chris's Medfield Insider until Tues- I did, I started it on Monday, I didn't get far enough down to realize the planning board was meeting that night.
I was only one, yes.
You were there, okay, so.
I couldn't remember, I thought it was before our last meeting, I, I, when I, yes.
I fully intended to, I wanted to go to that, cause I couldn't make the first one and I, so I assumed nothing strange came down.
They moved along, they showed where fire hydrants are gonna be, tree cover, all the trees, yeah, everything that you put in there, it was, um. I couldn't make last night's, um, Plain Street meeting. Actually, I dialed in, but it was, sound was horrible, so I, I punched it and said, I don't.
Yeah, we're not sure what happened, we're doing some testing today, we don't know what happened.
Okay, well, I just, I, I felt bad that I hadn't double-checked, just to make sure that some, no details changed between what we thought was going on and what was going on, that's good to hear. Um, and the only other thing I had last week, the Community Choice Aggregation Committee's been meeting. Kind of coming up on a year, so there's, there's statistics and things like that, that, in terms of the, the, you know, the carbon saved, the money saved, uh, participation, we're, we're, right now they're going through another sweep to bring anybody new in that might be there, but the plan is to put some information together. Probably for sure it'll be at Medfield Day. The, the carbon savings are really impressive, it's like they're in millions of pounds, it's, it's kind of incredible. Uh, and so far, we've been fortunate relative to Eversource, the Community Choice Aggregation rates throughout the entire year have been better than the Eversource rate. If you, if you're a hundred, if you're doing the one Medfield hundred, which is a hundred percent renewable, that's not always the case, sometimes you're actually paying a little more than basic, but we're actually, it's, I think it's due to, forget if it's, I think it's due to get cheaper even at the hundred level, so it's, it's kind of a success.
The hundred level is below the Eversource level at the moment.
At the moment. And, and, it's not always, that's not a hundred percent of the time that it's below, but people that are at the hundred level probably have motivations that don't have to do with a cent or two on their electricity rate.
But there are only about fifteen of them in town.
Uh, there were, yeah, no, there's. It was, I think it was a slightly bigger number. There were, yeah, no, there's, it was, I think it was a slightly bigger number than that, and they represented something like forty percent of the carbon savings. So, it's a relatively small number, like you're saying, but they by themselves represent about forty percent of the carbon that's being saved over and above. Okay, that's all I had.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for sticking it out.
My heart.